Good evening and welcome to the regular and executive session of the Governing Board of Washington Elementary School District. The time is 6:03. Ms. Tucker, can we please have a call to order and roll call vote?
Thank you, President Nikki Gomez-Waley. Governing Board members present, Governing Board President Ms. Nikki Gomez-Waley, Governing Board Vice President Ms. Ginny Abbott-Biardi, Governing Board Members Mr. Kyle Clayton and Ms. Tamelia Valenzuela.
Thank you. And before I call for an adoption of our executive and regular session meeting agenda, I am going to just let those that are watching and those in the room know that we will be going into an executive session, which means that we will be outside of this room. You all are welcome, of course, to stay here. And we will continue to accept forms for those that wish to do call to the public until 7:00 p.m. So folks that are watching this online or are still outside, we will be accepting those forms until 7:00 p.m. A member of the district and safety team will go out and collect additional forms. And as we are up in our executive session, Ms. Tucker here will take any forms from those folks still in the audience. Some of you may have noticed an orange checkmark being placed on your request to speak. That is simply so that we know that you're in the room. And if we don't have an orange checkmark, we know that we need to go look outside for the folks that need to speak. At this point, that is all the information that I wanted to share. I will let you know once we call the official meeting to order approximately how many folks we will have time to see tonight and how many minutes each person will be receiving. And so with that, board members, I am asking for an adoption of the March 9 executive session meeting agenda.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott-Biardi. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And so I now call for an executive session pursuant to ARS 38-43103 to discuss in consultation with the Governing Board's attorney regarding a procurement issue with the district's referral number 22.033 through the Employee Benefit Trust Consultant Services. Thank you.
We need a motion.
We already had the motion and approval?
For the agenda, now we need to make a call for executive session.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Tucker. We had an approval of the agenda. I now need to have a motion to enter into executive session.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott-Biardi. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes. So we will go into an executive session and will return to start
Good evening. Before we reconvene the regular meeting, I'm going to go ahead and do a little procedural stuff with our call to the public forms. In full transparency, I want to explain to you the process. We will be selecting forms from this box in order to determine who will be able to speak. We have allotted an hour's time for call to the public. We have received 70 submissions for call to the public. And so because we are granted the ability for time, place, and manner restrictions, I believe that I will be doing... Well, we're doing one hour, so we can do one minute for 55 folks, or we can do two minutes for others. So knowing that people have a lot of feelings about this, and a minute goes by much faster than folks think, I would like to go ahead and do two minutes. So that will allow us to have approximately 32 speakers. At two minutes each, that will put us at 64 minutes, in case somebody doesn't use their whole time. So at this time, I am going to poll 32 forms from this box. And for those of you that weren't in the room previously, those of you that are sitting in the room, there was an orange X placed on it. That simply means that you are here in this room and submitted a form to speak. Those without an orange X indicates to our staff that the person whose form we are taking is outside and did not make it into the building. And so those folks, while we are discussing the meeting, the regular meeting items, those folks will be identified out in the crowd and brought up in order to wait for their turn to speak. We will begin with the folks inside, allowing them to have their time. And then we will proceed bringing in groups of three to five into the building to do their call to the public. They will exit, and we will bring in the next group until we have gone through all 32 selected speakers. I do want to recall, and we will do this again, I'm not going to go into the details, but there were rules in place around calls to the public. And so at the end of the two-minute timer, which will be on the screens, the microphone will automatically cut off. Your time will be ended regardless of where you're at in your statement. And this is in order to be fair to all speakers and to ensure that we are able to continue with our regular business. I will get further details and descriptions at that time, but I do want to give folks the expectation that those that are selected will be notified by a member of our staff, and they will be called, and they will have the two minutes, which will end promptly. And I'll give further details when we get to that portion of the meeting, but I do want to give our staff opportunity to identify speakers while we are proceeding with the rest of the meeting. Thank you. As Ms. Tucker is confirming that we have 32 forms polled, I do also want to clarify, as a question was posed during turning those in, whether or not you could yield your time or remainder of your time to somebody else, or if you can provide... If your slip was selected, if you can give your speaking time to someone else. We will not be allowing that. That is not something that we had predetermined as something that we were going to allow for. So only those whose forms have been selected will be able to speak, and there will be no yielding of time to any other speakers. Only one speaker is allowed to approach the podium at a time. And any speakers that are not here or no longer that were polled, we will not be polling alternate speakers. Thank you. Governing Board members, I am looking for a motion to reconvene our regular meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott Beardi. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Ms. Tucker, when you have a moment, can you please do a roll call?
Thank you. Governing Board members present, Governing Board President, Ms. Nikki Gomez-Waley, Governing Board Vice President, Ms. Jenny Abbott Beardi, Governing Board Members, Ms. Lindsay Peterson, Mr. Kyle Clayton, and Ms. Tamila Valenzuela.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. We are going to take a moment of silence and meditation. I want to particularly mention that our community has lost several students and a staff member in the preceding weeks. And so I do want to take a moment to recognize those school communities, and as well as the families of those students and that staff member, as we take a moment of silence. Thank you. We will now do the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. May I now have a motion to approve the February 23 regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes. We are now going to take a moment for current events and acknowledgements of the governing board and our superintendent board members.
I'll start. Good evening, members of the audience. And thank you all for being here. I want to first and foremost acknowledge that this is Women's History Month, and not just our sisters, but our sisters as well. I'm going to take a moment to acknowledge our students that we have lost and our community member, who was a staff at one of our schools. And I want to address the hatred from our lawmakers, who have been bullying our LGBTQ students. There is a difference between acceptance and tolerance. And members of our society have been merely accepted, merely tolerated for their existence. We have watched as our children have been bullied for having autonomy. And you can say what you want about me. You've called me fat. You've called me the N-word. You've told me to go back to Mexico. You can say what you want. But our students, our young people, are watching you. And you are letting them know that you are not a safe person for them to be around. That they cannot exist in their full humanity. And I'm going to say something that is a shame, because adults are perpetuating bullying. They are perpetuating hatred. And because of that, our youth are experiencing emotional and mental health issues at an exceeding number. So you keep spitting your hatred. Because people who are truly rooted within Christ, okay, know what Christ's teachings were. And it was love. It was acceptance. It was not cursing people out on Facebook and Twitter. It was not spending time spreading misinformation. So I stand strong in everything I said, and I will strongly stand for our youth who do not have a choice in the things that they hear and the things that are said about them. Because some members of our community have sat up here and called our children illegal. Some members of our community have sat here and questioned the intelligence of our students. And I want you to ask yourself, how is that preaching Christ's teachings that you claim you stand so, so firmly in? An institution has policies that are openly bigoted. And I will not sit here, as a member of the community, and let our children be subjected to that.
Ms. Valenzuela, I'm going to move on to the next board member. Members of the audience, members of the audience, I am going to say this. I'm going to say this, and in fairness and as a caution, that we will maintain decorum in our meeting. I understand if folks want to applaud after a speaker, or boo after a speaker, or thumbs down, or thumbs up. However, interrupting any speaker, and this goes for the members of the board, or when we do our call to the public, will not be tolerated. If you do any of those types of things during somebody's speaking, you will be gavelled. A second time, you will be asked to leave. And so I will allow a brief moment for people to respond, but I will not have our meeting derailed by ongoing boos, chants, clapping, et cetera. Thank you. Other board members. Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, President Gomez-Waley. I wanted to just say two quick things. I wanted to publicly appreciate the individuals in our community who have reached out to us in ways of understanding and common ground, and just come to us with a desire to build our community from all sides. So I appreciate those people that have communicated with us the things that are important to them in ways that are appropriate and meaningful, and help us build our community the way we want it to be. I also wanted to express appreciation to the administration, and particularly to Ms. Tucker and Ms. Fernandez, who have worked so hard to set everything up and make sure that this could be a safe place, and that people could come here and share the ideas that they have that matter to them. And to President Gomez-Waley, I know you've worked really hard this week to make sure that we could be here in an appropriate way. And I also just want to say thank you to our social workers. I'm sure Dr. Stanton's going to talk about it, but it's School Social Worker Week, and it's such an integral part of what we do, so important. Our social workers work so hard, our kids, you know, especially coming out of COVID. And in my own school, I just see the way that my students love our social worker and rely on her, and are able to go to her in times that they just need a little bit of extra support. Just this week, you know, I had an experience where the social worker really changed a student's life, and it was so amazing. So thank you so much to RWASD social workers and for the work that they do, and for our team in putting those social workers in place so that we can have them on all of our campuses to support our kids when they need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Ms. Abbott Beardi.
Thank you, Madam President. So I too want to acknowledge that I think it's appropriate to take a moment to think about the seven students and the staff member that we have lost in the past month. Our administrators, our social workers, teachers, and staff have all done an amazing job to comfort and give support during this difficult time. And I wanted to thank you. We are here in large part to assist, encourage, and grow our students and communities when tragic events occur. We are also here to support them in their mourning. Please keep these families, friends, staff, teachers, administrators, and our community in your thoughts. Even a simple act of kindness can go a long way in soothing pain and promoting healing. I also want to talk about how much fun I had Read Across America Day. I was fortunate enough to take the day off and be the superfan for my schools. That week, I was able to go to the Acacia... I don't know exactly what you called it, but it was really cool, because every class, every grade level had a different spot for kids to come through. And my niece actually teaches in third grade, and she was in charge of the Dab Pilkey Third Grade Dog Books theme. And so it was fun to see her there. But it was wonderful just to see the school alive and see all the teachers, how hard they worked. I mean, they all looked wonderful. Many of them looked like they were younger than 21. But they're... They really... It was just so fun to see the excitement and enthusiasm with our teachers and administrators and all the extra work that they put in for that night. And then I went over to Sunburst there, Portillo Night, where it was raining, pouring rain out there over by Arrowhead Mall, and brought home some dinner, which was wonderful. Thank you for hosting that, and I hope to attend more events like that. The first stop I made, just so you know, on Read Across America Day, I went to Sunburst and was able to read to a kindergarten class, but it was so cool. This was really cool, because they have a... For Read Across America Day, they stop and drop and read for 15 minutes. So the whole inside, usually they're outside, but it was so cold and yucky out. The whole inside had all the grade levels reading, and it was really awesome. And the teachers and administrator, principal, and so forth, you all did a great job. It was just awesome to watch all these kids read. And then I went over to Sweetwater, and I read to a couple of classes. And I'm telling you, these schools, for those who are new to this evening, we've all, as a board, have been divided up into different regions of the district. So I'm kind of the superfan of a bunch of schools that feed into Desert Foothills as well. So I went to Sweetwater, and I read to a kindergarten class. But it was so... At Sweetwater, we have our special needs kids there, the severely disabled kids. And there was a group of four of them that I read to, and it was... This one little girl took the book that I was reading and kept kissing it. And it was... I was so grateful to be able to be there and offer that to them. So it was... I was choked up at the time and still tonight. Then I went over to Chaparral, and I read to four different classes, and I appreciate all the hard work that goes in, and the student teachers that were there, working with the kids. And went over to Mountain View. And went over to Mountain View real fast, to my pencil pals' school, and Ms. O'Keefe does such an awesome job putting the pencil pal program together. I'm a terrible pencil pal, I just will admit it. I don't, I'm just really bad, but I try. And so I was able to read to her class, sort of a self-contained class. And then I zipped over to Abraham Lincoln, and I read to the kids in the library, and I got to meet Dewey, a special little guest they have in the library there, named after Dewey Decimal System. And then I went over to Acacia, to these little kindergartners, and when I walked in, this is toward the very end of the day, I walked in, and two or three of them came over and hugged me because they're kindergartners. And then, then the whole group came around and hugged me, and it was very sweet. And I had a wonderful time there. But this is, at the end of the day, I went over to Desert Foothills, and I'd been reading to all the little kids like One Fish, Two Fish, and so I didn't have any books for the junior high. So I walked in, and the junior high reading teacher, who has taught American literature, hands me a big old thick book this big, without pictures. And so I read something about how the camel got its hump, and the words were so big, but the kids were very nice to me because I'd been reading very little words all day long. And so it was really fun. They liked it so much, they wanted me to read to them again with another little story in there. So I love junior high kids because I used to teach them. And then on the next day, I went to Ironwood, and I was able to read to a class over there as well, a self-contained class. So it was, I had a great time, and I just wanted to share all that with the community because this is what is fun about being on the school board.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott-Biardi. Mr. Clayton?
Yes. First up, I do want to recognize that it is National School Social Worker Week, as we've heard, and recognize their amazing work that they do every day, but especially in the last four weeks, extend an extra appreciation for all the work they've done to support our community. WSD has lost staff, a staff member, many students, and our social workers have deployed to each of those sites to comfort not only our students, but our staff, our administration, and our community. So I just want to thank our social workers for that. And as you heard, Read Across America Day took place last week. I was able to go and visit eight campuses and read to about a dozen classrooms. It was also an honor to have the governor visit our district. She read to Ocatillo Elementary to a group of third graders. And I too would also like to thank the people who wrote in with encouragement and constructive criticism. I have read all the emails received. However, a number of these emails have been vile, homophobic, and explicit. All harassments and threats that have been made to me have been reported to the Phoenix Police as well as the FBI, where they originated out of state. And I also want to recognize that all of our board members have received hateful communications, but I want to stand in solidarity with Mrs. Valenzuela. Since our last board meeting, she has faced increased death threats, racial attacks, homophobic harassment, as a result of her photo being at the top of many media stories. I am grateful for the representation she brings to this board and that she shows for this community. Finally, March is Women's History, finally, March is Women's History Month, and I want to recognize and honor the women of this board, the women of our administration, the women of our, in our staff, teachers, administrators, social workers, and just thank them and honor them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. And for those that have worked with youth, snapping is a quiet and polite way of agreeing, so I am okay on either side with that during the speaking, so long as it doesn't prohibit the speaker from communicating. And again, snapping would be allowed for either side for any comments as an appropriate way that many of our youth and communities show agreement, and it is less impactful than voices or clapping. So I just wanted to offer that we are still humans, we have human reactions, and I do want to be fair. So please, I encourage whichever stance that that isn't an allowable practice. So that will leave me with our final comments before we turn it over to our administration. I first and foremost do want to raise up the beautiful things that are happening across our district. You know, it has been a very difficult time. Our district has experienced loss of young folks and staff members. We have experienced, you know, some difficult times as we're trying to negotiate and ensure that our educators and our staff people are fairly compensated, given the limited resources we are provided by the state. And I have all of that at the top of my mind as we are also working through this most recent issue. But before I address that, I do want to thank the administration and all of those that are, were involved in the drive-through coffee event for our social workers. They have worked extremely hard, as I said, in the last few weeks especially, but always they are understaffed. There's far too many of them while we are and have continued to prioritize the social emotional learning of our students and social workers as part of that process. The ratios are far, far higher than what is recommended, and so I want to appreciate those social workers for taking on that caseload. I also unfortunately didn't have a lot of time to commit to Read Across America this year as I was elsewhere occupied, but I did get to read at Tumbleweed to three different classrooms, and it is a great experience, the thrill of reading, and I very much enjoy the diverse books that were provided by the administrators and the classroom teachers so that students can see representations of themselves. And I very much enjoyed reading both a book about my love, and then another book from my childhood, which is Silverstein's Where the Sidewalk Ends. I read a couple poems from there. Kindergartens, they love that. So that was a beautiful time, and I do want to acknowledge all the teachers who took the time to create those learning spaces, all the principals and readers that came to make that a special time for our kids. When, you know, our kids, many of them are still recovering and struggling with the aftermaths of COVID, and in addition to all the other traumas and experiences that they may have. We do live in a district where we do have a lot of food insecurity, poverty, crime, and discrimination that they experience in their lives. So to be able to provide that is a beautiful thing. I don't want to speak too much on this as Mr. Clayton and Ms. Valenzuela mentioned, and every did. I do appreciate the emails that were considerate and thoughtful on whatever their position was, whether it was a concern or a call of rejection of this board's vote, or whether it was a call of support and solidarity. I appreciate those that took the time to provide sincere felt positions and to share those with us. Unfortunately, that was the minority of emails that were received. The vast, vast majority came from outside of our community, some even outside of our state, but those within the state from, and everything from legislatures to just other people that live in our neighboring communities, which were in fact vile, which called for, and part of the security tonight is it called for mass shootings, it called for holding us accountable with pictures and guns associated with that, it called for violent physical and sexual assaults on board members. This thing cannot be tolerated. We recognize that people feel passionate, but there is absolutely no excuse to harass and intimidate and provide that kind of language to elected members of this community. And so I do want to take an opportunity to say, we hear the ones that are thoughtful and are sharing their concerns on either side of this message, but the other ones will not be responded to or tolerated. And so with that, I will pass it over to our administration.
Madam President, members of the board, members of the audience, as has been shared by many, there has been much loss in our district. It affects our whole community, whether it's our staff or our students. I say to everyone, we do have support systems, we do have social emotional, we have the help with our social workers and our social services. Thank you for that, but also thank you to all the staff that had to deal directly with that need. We come out, we plan, we help them, and we continue to help them now and into the future. It is a busy time of year, and you want to also recognize, I heard a lot of what we're all a part of, but I also was able to get to the girls' Choya Charger Classic basketball that's been going on and actually continues to go on. I wish all those teams the best. I take no sides. I want them all to win because when you work in a district, you want to see everybody do well. I do want to thank everyone for Read Across America, who was ever able to participate, or whoever supported our people in reading. It was great. I got a chance to get out to many schools. I thank our governor, I thank our mayor, and everyone else that got out there and read books with our students and our families at night. Also, there was a lot of fun activities in the evening. I do want to thank Jenny Champ and the whole wellness team. We did have our 5K walk-run yoga. Again, thank you to everyone. It is social, School Social Worker Week, so again, thank you to all the social workers that are out there in our district who every day make a difference in the lives of our kids, and we appreciate that so much. Also, we did have Title VI Parent Night, so I want to thank Lori and the team, and Jamie Brown, Native American families for coming out and also being there. That was great, and so thank you for that as well. We appreciate it. And then in our WSD board policy, we do share that the WSD values open and honest communication and welcomes all viewpoints. In the same policy, we talk about valuing the health and safety and the welfare of our students, and our parents, and our community, and our staff, and our governing board. As mentioned by many, recently, we have had WSD board members have received threats and personal attacks, and this does not match the values in our, in our policy at all. And as Mr. Clayton, you mentioned, we did share them with law enforcement, and will continue when those are there. We do ask for civil discourse now and continue as we continue the work of educating our students and working with our wonderful staff in the WSD. And so again, thank you for all the hard work of everyone. It has been a hard and difficult time, but thank you to what everyone does every single day for the students and the staff of our district.
Thank you, Dr. Stanton. Okay, this will bring us to the public participation portion of our meeting. Before the first speaker, we will read the admonition statement, but I also want to review, because we do have much more participation than usual, I do want to kind of review the participation protocols prior to the admonition statement being read. We will only read that once, but it applies to all speakers. So first and foremost, as a reminder, all individuals were able, who wished to address the board, were able to complete a public participation form. Those forms are required to be turned in prior to the start of the board meeting, and were collected until 7:00 PM. Those were collected and contributed to the plastic box which we drew from, and that was to allow folks, regardless of when they were able to get away from work or what have you, to have opportunity to submit that, and so that we could provide some fairness in terms of who was able to participate in this. As we discussed before, we do have other very pressing matters on our agenda, and so we have limited our speaking time for public participation, which is allowable through policy and state statute to one hour. Any completed forms will be reviewed and then called, those speakers will be called to the podium. As I mentioned before, each speaker will be granted two minutes of speaking time, and in the admonition, we will speak to those that require interpretation. The mic will be shut off at the two-minute mark, regardless of where you are in your statement, and we ask that you respect the timer and return to your seat, or if you are being invited in from overflow, that you proceed out and exit the gates. You will be shown the way by our safety and mentoring team. Anyone that violates the rules, which were posted on the back of, the rules of decorum, which were posted on the back of the forms, will be gavelled, as I mentioned before. You will get a singular warning. Second, dairy gavel, you will be asked to vacate the premises, and I will review what those rules of decorum are in just a moment. So disruptions are primarily what we are concerned of, and we are defining those as yelling, holding of large signs, using foul language, derogatory language and slurs. Personal attacks upon board members are not tolerated and will result in being removed from the meeting. And with that, I will have Ms. Abbott-Biardi read the admonition statement.
Thank you, Madam President. The governing board welcomes the responsibly presented viewpoints of our students, parents, community, and staff. Our intent is to maintain a professional atmosphere that promotes public participation and the conduct of business in an orderly, efficient manner. Speakers are allotted a maximum speaking time of two minutes. If interpretation services are required, speakers are allotted a maximum time of six minutes, including, four minutes, including interpretation. Depending upon the quantity of speakers and length of the agenda, the board president may reduce this time limit. The board, through the superintendent, has established procedures for responding to questions and complaints. Board policy also requires that any grievances against board members, any district employee or student, be submitted in writing to the board president or superintendent. It is the prerogative of the board president to limit or stop any speaker who chooses to disregard this process in public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott-Biardi. I will, as a reminder, ask not to interrupt the speaker. If the speaker cannot be heard by the governing board over background noise, we will pause the time to allow that person to maintain their allotted time. And again, clapping and booing during a speaker is not appropriate. If you wish to show any kind of agreement or support, we ask that you use the snapping model as opposed to clapping, shouting, or other forms of expression. Ms. Tucker?
Thank you. First, I want to apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. When I call your name, you will come forward and you will restate your name so we can get it on the record correctly. The first person is Krista Caroly, Carola? Krista C-E-R, I think, I-L-O-L-A? Oh, okay. The next person is Laura Blakesley, Laura Blakesley. She would like to address the board regarding the ACU partnership. She is an interventionist at Roadrunner Elementary.
17 years. Madam President and governing board members, I'd like to address the board's recent decision to dissolve the WSD partnership.
Hold on just a moment, please. We need to start the timer, and once the timer starts, then you'll state your name for the record. And as I mentioned before, only one speaker, so the name of the speaker is only the person allowed. So which one of you will be speaking?
Me.
Okay, so I will ask that your counterpart have a seat, please.
Thank you, Amy.
Again, that rule was stated previously, only the speaker is allowed to approach the podium.
I'm going to hit this timer.
No. Madam President and governing board members, I'd like to address the board's recent decisions to dissolve the WSD partnership with Arizona Christian University because of the university's values. Allow me to remind the board that all practicum students and student teachers are supervised directly by WSD teachers. Members of the board have said that they strive to bring, quote, "an analytical, data-driven approach to decision-making." However, the board was acting on a bunch of what-ifs when voting on this matter. Since this board was asking for more data, I just wanted to share some of my own. 17 years in this district. Out of the dozens of practicum students I have had throughout my WSD teaching career, 16 of them have been from ACU. All 16 have taught lessons to my students under the direct supervision of myself or other. other mentor teachers at my school. All sixteen have had glowing reviews in regards to their instruction, strategies, and connections made with all students. Never at any time did our students feel unsafe or attacked, ever. This year, Roadrunner has hosted twelve ACU practicum students, so far, two of which want to come back and do their student teaching at Roadrunner. Many in education agree that practicum leads to student teaching and can lead to a wonderful higher. Out of around a dozen student teachers throughout the years, all but one of mine were hired by the WESD. By building relationships, building relationships, we have the incredible opportunity to build up and hire qualified teachers. There have been zero complaints against ACU students in the entire history of our partnership. I was asked zero questions about my experience with my ACU students by this board while you were doing your own research on this partnership. Other ACU mentors have said the same. I'm so disappointed. I just urge you to rethink this, and I encourage you to get to know these wonderful, passionate, loving ACU students and their wonderful staff, as I have. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Amy McFarlane. Amy McFarlane. Thank you. She would like to address... She would like to address the board regarding the ACU rejection. She is from the Shawbut attendance area.
We're going to restart your time. The microphone was off. Hold on, Ms. Tucker. We apologize, Ms. McFarlane. Can we give you a test before we start your timer?
I'm Amy McFarlane, a teacher at Shawbut, part of the Washington Elementary School District Number Six. I define myself as an educator, white woman, citizen of the nation, Afro-descendant, and also a Christian, who ensures respect, inclusion, and freedom of rights of all human beings, regardless of their race, social position, gender, or beliefs. I must say, for those whose voices have been silenced for fear of threats, and for those who have lost their lives as a consequence of persecution of different kinds of political agendas around the world, that instead of promoting good things like justice or inclusion, they promote the opposite without noticing it. Today, I'm referring to the WESD Board of Members who committed an injustice against Arizona Christian University student teachers and their values. The board members didn't think about the repercussions of the discriminatory actions against those who are seeking for a common goal, providing an exemplary education based on respect and non-discrimination. Is this the message that the five of you members and your followers are intending to actually communicate? I dare say no, but intentionally, you're doing it, or not, probably. This is the message that you are and your followers sending to all of our community, Christian community. Whether you are Christian, a Christian worker, parent, or a student, the Washington Elementary School District does not have a place for you. Five people who are in a position of power are telling ACU student teachers directly and indirectly telling all of us, Christian parents, students, staff members, and educators, you do not belong here. And we also, humans, or Christian students, humans with feelings too. Many people, students, raised their voices through the years and fought for their beliefs, but some pretend to silence exemplary teachers in our district. Your decision, board members, keep damaging our psychologically and emotionally environment, and this only widens the...
Our next speaker is Erica Smith. She is from the Mountain Sky Junior High area, and she would like to address the board regarding the ACU contract.
My name is Erica Smith, and this is my twenty-second year with the WESD in the same position. I'm here to address the board regarding the contract between WESD and Arizona Christian University. I'm here to speak for my fellow people of faith and my relationships in the district. Your decision to criticize the traditional values of this university is outside of your scope of practice. In fact, religion is a protected entity of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, and acting against this by definition is unlawful. Not only is it discrimination of all faiths, but it creates division among people, and as leaders, your conduct is uncalled for. For eleven years, we've had a positive relationship with ACU and hired some phenomenal teachers because of this partnership, many of them I work with at Mountain Sky. But because they love their Creator and hold values that aren't yours, that aren't yours, they are unworthy of the same arrangement that we have with other universities. Terminating the contract has created disunity and stirs up conversations that portray you in a negative light. Is that what you wanted? As Christians or people of faith, we honestly don't have time during the school day to talk to children about what we believe. We're there to provide them an education, to live by example of our own faith, and that doesn't mean that we're preaching. I want you to know that.
The next speaker to come up to the microphone is Erin, and please forgive me, Sarah Cola. Thank you. And he would like to address the board regarding the ACU contract, and he is an Arizona and U.S. citizen.
Thank you. Good evening. Hello, 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 hello? Is it on? Is it on? I'm on, I'm on. Hello? There we go. Good evening, WESD Board members, teachers, parents. It's an honor to be with everyone here this evening. My name is Erin Sarah Cola. I'm from Peoria. This recent contract dismissal of student teachers affiliated with ACU based on assumption is totally biased, it's wrong, and completely discriminatory towards Christians in general. All teachers, regardless of what universities they study at, must sign and abide by the district's non-discrimination policies. Have you signed that form as well, Tamilla, or are you above discrimination? Has there been, there has been no evidence of ACU students influencing kids based on their own Christian beliefs, but yet you have influenced the board's decision to deny jobs for student teachers who come from this particular Christian university based on your own personal beliefs or dislikes. Let's not forget, Nikki, that you stated that it's not just about being a Christian, but it's about how does one teacher just shut off an essential part of their being while teaching these kids? Well, I would ask the same question to you, board members, who made this biased and discriminatory decision, who canceled jobs of these students. You make accusations while you did the very same thing that you have concerns with. What is next, folks? How about signs on every school district or businesses that Christians are not allowed? By denying these ACU student teachers contracts, you are setting a precedent through the state of Arizona that discrimination towards Christians is allowed while your accusations, falsities, and beliefs get a pass. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Ben, and forgive me, it's, I think, L-A-R-R-B-E-E? And he would like to, he has a general comment, and he is representing Christians.
Just, give her just a moment. Because we have to turn it on and off, it takes a little bit of a delay, so please forgive us.
Yes. Members of the board, I stand before you as an Arizonan, a member of Turning Point USA, and a Bible-believing Christian. Last week, people of faith like me were described as a danger to students and that our beliefs make them feel unsafe. On the contrary, our faith is grounded in verses like Micah 6:8, which reads, "What does the Lord require of you but to do justice on their behalf, to love with kindness, and walk humbly before your God?" We are commanded to love and seek justice on behalf of whole students, no matter who they are. But do not get me wrong, I do believe students are suffering in this district. I do believe students are unsafe in this district. Let's see of the abuse they suffered in the last three years because of lockdowns, mask mandates, and insane COVID policies, which they have become unsafe. Seniors are graduating with the lowest ACT scores in three decades. Students that do make it to college face a mountain of debt and no prospects. Shunning students indoors has caused childhood obesity to double and rapidly shorten the lives of our young children. Most alarmingly, half of students reported that poor mental health, a fifth have considered suicide in the past few years, and this is compounded by the fact that half of your students are coming from homes with no father in them. As educators and board members and parents, you know better than most how much our students are suffering. The Christian educators that came into this district knew the challenges they would face, but accepted the job anyway because of the deep and passionate love they have for their students. All that I would ask you is, do not deprive them of this, and do not deprive students of the only lifeline they have. They may be the only ally they have in their quarter. If you remove these educators because of their faith, not only are you flagrantly defying the First Amendment, you are further condemning students to the injustices they have suffered in the past three years. Students need a lifeline. Don't cut...
The next speaker is Jeff Caldwell. He would like to address the board regarding the withdrawal from the ACU contract.
Test.
Yes.
So the First Amendment prevents a government body from implementing a regulation because of religion. And there was no evidence provided that was directly a result of discrimination from the teachers from ACU. Now, this isn't just about Tamilla, this is the entire board. The entire board voted unanimously to withdraw this contract. This is a violation of the First Amendment of the Constitution. ACU just submitted what I think is going to be a multimillion-dollar case against this board, and it's going to cost taxpayers millions of dollars. Instead of money going into the classroom, it's going to go into legal system. And I just want to bring it up that it was unconstitutional what you guys did, and it is unacceptable. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Patricia Pelllett, P-E-L-L-E-T-T. She would like to address the board. She's from S-U-S-D, and she would like to address the board regarding discrimination. One second. Are you ready? Okay, go ahead.
The handheld?
The handheld. Let me start over, because you lost a couple seconds there. Ready?
Yes.
Go.
First, they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. And then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. And then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. This will not be me. I have stood up my whole life against discrimination, against everyone, and I will not tolerate now. And if people don't start standing up across America against this discrimination against Christians, the persecution will continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Heather Vasquez. She is representing the Washington Principals Association, and she would like to address the board regarding equity in staffing. The handheld? Okay.
My name is Heather Vasquez. I'm representing the...
Please hold. While I appreciate the sentiment, one of the rules was to not obstruct the vision of other participants or our recording, which is livestreamed in alignment with open meeting law, so I am going to have to ask you to remain seated, unfortunately. I cannot allow that for any particular speaker.
All right. My name is Heather Vasquez. I'm representing the Washington Principals Association. We come here tonight on behalf of the Washington Principals and Assistant Principals. We have a letter outlining our concerns regarding the last few board meetings. We were disappointed in what we are hearing and seeing. We love this district. We choose to work here. We choose to stay here. We choose to protect our students and our staff from discrimination. We can and should be able to disagree respectfully, and no one should face threats of personal attacks due to our personal beliefs. As principals, we want to address the hateful comments and attacks on any of our governing board members. The health and safety of our organization must be grounded in our core principles of respect, kindness, professionalism, and understanding of differing beliefs and opinions. While we can and should be able to disagree respectfully, no one should be subjected to personal attacks or threats. We expect that our board members are treated with the same respect and dignity that we commit to treating all students, staff, and families like in our school district. We want our current and prospective teachers, staff, parents, and students and public to know that we stand beside them. Regardless of your race, color, national origin, sex, religion, we are principals, and we are here to support you. Teachers and staff, we believe in you. Teachers and staff, we believe in you. We understand that while your personal beliefs form the work ethic and define who you are, you know how to respect people of all backgrounds and cultures. We see it every day. If you are working for us or plan to work for us, we will experience acceptance and inclusion on our campuses. We want teachers and staff to know, who love and understand our kids, that we hold them-
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kendra Stanley. She would like to address the board regarding the ACU contract, and she is representing the Moon Valley, Lookout Mountain, Mountain Sky area.
No problem. Mr. Kern, our safety and mentoring team are monitoring the room, it is not your responsibility. Thank you.
Ms. Tucker, is our mic working?
Test.
Oh, there it is.
Test.
Absolutely. Okay, let's start the timer over, please.
Hi, I would like to start out by saying thank you, Valenzuela, very much for having successfully just put a target on the backs of all of the little Christian children at these schools. I believe that if any one of you school board members were intellectually honest, especially you, President Whaley, you would admit that putting all religion and faith aside, that having Christian teachers at these schools would not be a danger to the kids. If you truly believe that, then where do you draw the line? You now have to check into, I hate to say it, but the precious Muslim teachers and the Jewish teachers. You want to know why? Because they also share the same exact precept that Christians do about homosexual marriage. I will tell you who the real threat to our children is. Overall, it's the entire board here that voted against this contract last week, but especially you, Valenzuela, that led this charge. Have any of you seen, these are not my words, but her own profession of her value system on her own personal profile page professing to be witchy AF? And I won't say it because that's against the rules.
I'm going to ask you to limit your comments to your positions and not towards anybody's individual-
Sure.
Facebook pages or what have you.
Sure. Okay, you can go look at that for yourself. That to me, that value system is a real, true danger to our kids. Or even, because a couple of you on the board, this is how it relates, you expressed being afraid, not just the-
Your two minutes is up.
I'm going to ask you to stop speaking out of turn. I do have to remind the community that personal attacks that get personal about individuals outside of the boardroom or their board role are not permissible, but unfortunately, as public officials, we are able to be addressed and concerns are able to be addressed to us. And Ms. Valenzuela or any other board members who feel that they had been personally singled out will have an opportunity to address those comments at the end of the call to the public. Thank you.
The next person is, excuse me, Jeff Corde, Corde, C-O-R-D-E, I think it's an S or Z, I'm sorry. He would like to address the board regarding the ACU contract, and he is representing Washington School District.
Testing.
Testing.
Okay, I'm still, I'm still digesting a little bit the fact of a multimillion lawsuit that the board is costing us taxpayers. It's unconscionable. I mean, we talk about hurting the children. That hurts. That hurts. Do we not? I'm not even going to go into the funding issues, but I do want to say that the Christians, Christian hate and fear, prejudice displayed by this board is unpatriotic and also unconscionable. A unanimous decision to cancel ACU and their contract based solely on religious beliefs and statements of faith. This self-inflicted, illegal circus is going to pass. This will be history soon, but I'll tell you, the anti-Christian attitudes and biases on this board is going to persist. And I watched the meeting on YouTube. Only one or two board members actually asked multiple relevant questions about the contract. It was stated, "Well, we don't know if we ever hire ACU students." Well, it's a mystery. Well, they think, maybe they're all from California and they just leave. Please, do some homework. Okay, we'll accept an answer now as you railroad the decision that you made about the contract, and this circus will pass, but my prayer for the kids in this school and this board is that this board will either step up or step down.
Next comment.
The next person is Hector Jarimelo. Has a general comment and a citizen.
Test it for me, please.
Hello, hello?
Ready?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Hector Jarimelo. I'm a school board member from Glendale, and I'm speaking in my personal capacity as a former student of WESD. I stand in firm solidarity with Tamila Valenzuela and the WESD board. Cutting ties with ACU had nothing to do with religion. It had everything to do with an institution that views the LGBTQ+ community as bestiality and incest. It's on their website, and they group it within the same parentheses.
Ms. Tucker, please pause the timer. Hissing is not permissible. Continue.
So, if you want your religion to be associated with that view of gay people, then continue talking, continue speaking up. All right, while concerned with the potential harm it could bring to our students, the WESD unanimously cut ties with this specific institution and not religion. So why the attacks on Tamila on the national level when this was a unanimous decision? It's because she's a proud, unapologetic queer Afro-Latina, and she simply exists. That's it. You're allowed to criticize decisions that any board makes, but when you attack people's appearance, their family, their son, while publishing their personal info online and sending death threats, that is when you cross the line. That's when you're no longer representing a faith of Christ. You're allowed to be upset over the decision, but understand why it was made. We're here to serve all children, especially those that are constantly attacked and bullied into depression and suicide. Again, if you want your version of Christianity to be associated with ACU's hateful view of our community, continue talking, continue showing the community how you stand. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Catherine Lanting. She is wanting to address the board regarding the ACU student-teacher contract, and she says she lives in the district's boundaries.
Thank you. Test, test? Yep, thank you. First of all, as a Christian, I condemn personal attacks against anybody. My name is Catherine Lanting. I've lived in the district for almost five years. I hold degrees in education and English from Northern Arizona University. Currently, I homeschool. You may think that as a homeschooling family, I don't have any skin in this game, but I am part of this community. I'd like to congratulate you on making national news, joining a long line of school districts across the country that ostracize those who hold Christian values. In your recent decision to cancel your contract with ACU, you have broken state and federal law and also your own district's policies. It says on your page, "You do not discriminate in your hiring practices," except now you do officially. You express concern that hiring teachers directly from a Christian faith would make a classroom unsafe. What the board members have decided under the guise of neutrality and secularism is that you don't want biblical Christianity in the classroom. But neutrality is a myth. No person in this room holds a neutral view on any issue today. All of us live our lives influenced by our beliefs. You worry about the safety of LGBTQ students and staff, but this decision communicates that Christian students and staff are not welcome or safe. Christianity is acceptable to you insofar as it aligns with your lack of Christianity, and that's discriminatory. The First Amendment did not intend to protect people from the influence of personal religion in public spaces. It intended to keep the government from regulating religious belief and practice. But in your decision to keep ACU students and graduates out of your school, you have done exactly what the First Amendment sought to prevent. It's illegal, and worse, it's immoral. You will be accountable to God, whether you acknowledge Him or not, and you all need to repent of your sins and believe the gospel of Jesus Christ. Yes, I said it. The inalienable right of the freedom of religion is not granted to us by the government which you represent. It is granted to us by God. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Lindsay Love. She is addressing the board regarding protecting LGBTQ kids, and she is, forgive me, I can't, thank you. Can you state where you're representing?
Wait, I want to-
Please, yeah, please make sure that the mic is on and that this timer has started.
Test it for me, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Did you want me to speak to who I'm representing?
We already have, oh.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, please state your name and who you're representing.
Lindsay Love, and my practice therapy, Love PLLC, and I'm also a former board member with the Chandler Unified School District, but I am not representing them. Am I good in my timer? Okay, thank you. Thank you, members of the board. I think that it is clear that this is not an issue of discrimination against Christians, given the fact that we look at the legislature, and there were 11 bills targeting LGBTQ students and families. And how many bills right now are targeting Christians? This is the wrong issue of discrimination. Nobody is attacking Christians. I grew up Southern Baptist. We have faith leaders out there who are in support of this board because the important thing is who is under attack right now, which is our LGBTQ students. And that is what this board and Mrs. Valenzuela brought forward. And I think it's interesting that a bunch of so-called Christians have used their platforms to target Ms. Valenzuela for being neurodivergent, which our district has many neurodivergent children in this state, right? They become doctors, they become lawyers, they sit on boards, and you will not tell her that she is not capable of being on this board because you don't know how to read the definition of neurodivergent. And I am a therapist, check me on it. And I think that you have chosen to target Ms. Valenzuela because she represents the groups that are often demonized when we talk about desegregation and it fits this narrative for voucher expansion. You want to make her into the political boogeyman so that you can be across the street raising funds for a senate race for a Brian Morris who I've never even heard about. This is the biggest grift that I have ever seen, and I want to thank this board for standing up for what is right. And the young lady, thank you.
Two minutes. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker, the next speaker is Anna Hernandez. She has a public comment, and she is a state senator.
Please hold, and make sure your mic works, Senator.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Do I need to say anything?
I said everything.
Thank you. I'm here to state that we are proud to stand with the school board that is standing up for students, especially as we see over a dozen legislative bills that are targeting our LGBTQ youth. This decision helps assure students and families who are being attacked that the classroom will be a place that will be protected and valued. We are proud to stand with this board and grateful for their courage to make decisions that support all students' wellness. If a person wants, if a parent wants their child to have an education with a foundation in faith, schools exist for that. There's religious schools that you literally can take your kids to, and you can exercise your parent choice. There are also other religious institutions that don't lead with hateful and divisive values. School board members play a critical role in defining and enforcing policies that help to create safer, more affirming school environments, especially as we see local and national attacks on LGBTQ kids spearheaded by people, including far-right city legislators, that when they don't agree with the decisions a duly-elected governing board makes, they're willing to attempt to overthrow our government and fail, just like they fail our public education system.
Thank you. I am going to ask that we do not interrupt the speakers while they are speaking with applause or any other things. Let's continue on with the next speaker.
The next speaker is Jenine, I think it's J-E-N-N-I-E-N Hernandez. Is it J-E-N-N?
Jenny.
Jenny, thank you. And she would like, she has a public comment, and she is representing the community.
Can you hear me? Okay. Yes, thank you. Does my time start now? Where can I say that? Oh, can you start it? I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
Yeah, she hasn't said anything yet, so we'll go ahead and start it.
My name is Jennifer Hernandez, and I am here as a queer youth. As school board members, we play a critical role in defining and enforcing policies that help create safer, more affirming school environments, especially as we see local and national attacks on LGBTQ+ students and kids. The vote to end the contract with ACU is not an attack on Christianity. It is support for all students, especially LGBTQ+ students. This decision helps assure students and families who are being attacked can feel assured that the classroom will be a place, they will be protected and valued. The fact that Arizona Christian University makes our students sign a morality clause, which essentially states that marriage should be between a man and a woman, is saying our children, literal children, are sinners, and we all know what the church says about sinners. You are saying our children will go to hell because they are different. That is not very Christian of y'all. And I'll be damned if my daughter's school ever said that about her, ever said that about their students, because I'd be there every single day fighting for her and our children as I am here. The fact that they are attacking and threatening another human, a school board member, a proud queer woman, is not very Christian of y'all. I hope other school board members stand up for their fellow member and recognize that people that are threatening the lives of other humans are not people who love God. These are haters. These are people who hate humanity, who have nothing in their heart but despise. That is not true Christianity. We have fought far too long to make sure that this doesn't continue to be the reality for our LGBTQ+ children. We are proud, I am proud, to stand with a school board that is standing up for students, especially as we oversee dozen legislative bills that are targeting LGBTQ youth daily.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is, is it Virginia, it's V, I believe, I-R-I-A-
Ms. Tucker, what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and let them reintroduce themselves with their names, once we know kind of who we're going to identify, and after they've introduced themselves with their name, and do you need something else that you can't?
Just some handwriting.
Okay. No, I understand. I think everyone was writing while standing.
My name is Viridiana Hernandez, and I am with AC Polet and Local Organization in West Phoenix and South Phoenix.
Go ahead.
Perfect. I am here today to talk about the ACU contract, right? There has been attacks around what this contract was. Do you mean that this was an attack on Christianity and an attack on Christians? It's absolutely not true. This is a support for all students, especially as there are actual literal attacks right now on LGBTQ youth that are happening at the state legislature every single day, most of them, the majority of them, being pushed and being promoted by the so-many so-called Christians that are infringing on student and young people's safety, health, and rights. That is what is actually happening right now. And as Senator Hernandez shared, right, there are no bills right now at the state legislature against Christians. That is not an attack that's happening, and so I'm here today to say thank you for voting and doing this unanimous vote, and I'm also here to also claim and just point light to the hateful, hateful attacks we've seen on Board Member Tamelia Valenzuela, that we have seen for weeks now by all of these so-called Christians that we have heard, attacks that have pushed and threatened her safety, that have threatened with drive-bys, that have threatened with weapons, that have said, "Watch your back," right? Threats that have called, have made fat-phobic, homophobic, and ableist comments. So don't tell us that these values are not going to impact the safety when they're literally impacting people's lives right now. We're watching it. We're watching it outside, we're watching it happen right now. I went to Grand Canyon University, and I can attest and confirm that those values do impact the teaching. They absolutely do. I was there, and I went to become a teacher, I went to do my practicum. I assure you that those biases, those homo...
Please state your name and who you're representing.
And the handheld mic.
Hello? All right, good evening. My name is Andrea Barera, and I'm representing the Arizona Community for Public Education. And I want to keep this short and sweet. I want to come here to thank the Washington Elementary School District School Board for upholding the separation between church and state. I and many others in this room, in the city, and across the state, and across the nation are so grateful that you're taking a stand and dissolving this partnership with ACU. We believe that public institutions that serve the greater good of the community, such as the Washington Elementary School District, have no business in partnering with private institutions that espouse hateful values, such as those on ACU's website. You all on this board recognize that, and you took action. You upheld the First Amendment, did your due diligence to separate church and state, and in my opinion, are way more American than those who seek to destroy you. So thank you so much for all that you've done. You are a courageous bunch, and I'm here to support you and let you know that everything you're doing to support the joy and the belonging of all of our students is seen and it's validated. We have some people who are showing their students that hate is okay, and we're going to overshadow that with the love that we have for each other. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I make an announcement about a car. Someone who has a white Chevy Equinox, we need you to move your vehicle. A white Chevy Equinox, please move your vehicle. Sorry. The next speaker, please. Please state your name, your topic, and who you're representing.
My name is Chris Gelker. I'm really just representing myself. Forty years ago, I lived in this district, some forty years ago. My son was a student here.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't...I was writing down the name, so let's go ahead and start that.
Okay. My name is Chris Gelker, and I'm really just representing myself. Some forty years ago, I lived in this district. My son was a student here. He was...he is gay. He was struggling at that time. I don't know that he really acknowledged it to himself or to us till he got into high school, but he was struggling in middle school, and he ended up attempting suicide. And, you know, things weren't perfect in this district forty years ago. It wasn't really accepting and nurturing. They were probably better than some places, but they weren't that good. And so when I heard about this, I just thought, "I am so grateful to Ms. Valenzuela and you other board members for having the courage to try to make things better for the new generations of people like my son." I just had to come here and say, "Thank you from the bottom of my heart. I really appreciate what you're doing."
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please. State your name, the topic, and who you're representing, or the community you're from.
Hi, my name's Hayden Nguyen. I'm a student at Gilbert Public Schools, and I represent Support Equality Arizona Schools. As somebody who's a student, I think I speak on behalf of all teachers, all students, when I say that I support the board and I thank the board for what they did in discontinuing their partnership with ACU last board meeting. ACU is a hateful organization, to be frank, an organization that makes people sign away...sign a pledge against gay marriage, against LGBTQ people, against transgenderism. And right now, I go to school every day, and in a mental health crisis, in a crisis where one-in-five transgender and non-binary students attempted suicide just last year, where just last year, over 90% of LGBTQ students received a slur, received discrimination, experienced discrimination in our schools. As a school board, you have a special responsibility to protect your kids. You know this, and that's why I really thank you, and that's why I'm here to thank you today for protecting your kids by recognizing this mental health crisis, by recognizing the discrimination that is caused by organizations like ACU, by the people standing across the road there yelling hateful things to me, yelling hateful things to my friends, yelling at us and telling us that we are hate, that we were paid to be here. Every day, I hear about sexual assault, I hear about people attempting suicide, I hear about people having suicidal thoughts. It's experienced heavily within our LGBTQ youth. I really want to thank you guys for ending your partnership with ACU, and I really want to thank Valenzuela, this first board member Valenzuela, for standing up to these threats, these threats of violence that were brought upon you, brought upon the LGBTQ community, brought against drag shows, brought on our state legislator. One of my colleagues mentioned earlier that there is no attacks in legislation right now in our state legislator. They're acting on false claims.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Speaker, please.
Everyone, we talked about this at the beginning of the meeting, that those folks that were drawn from the bucket were notified, some of them are inside, some of them are outside. The names were called and verified outside, and they are being brought in in small groups to finish the public participation. Thirty-two names in all were polled. We are going to allow for the thirty-two people to speak. It is going to exceed our one-hour limit, but that was the understanding, and I want to be respectful of those that participated and were notified that they would be able to speak. Please make sure we turn...we do not turn off the mics. If you come to the podium to...
Share the batteries.
Just as a double check, please make sure that you leave the mic on when you exit. There are additional issues, to be sure, but we are going to try to eliminate as many as we can. Ms. Hernandez, if you are available to bring alternative batteries.
I'm Reverend Sarah Oglesby Donegan. I'm with Unitarian Universalist Justice Arizona. So, members of the board and staff and community members, as I just said, I'm Reverend Sarah Oglesby Donegan, and I am the Senior Minister for Valley Unitarian Universalist Congregation in Chandler, Arizona. Unitarian Universalists are not bound by creeds, but rather an understanding of covenant or relationship, what it means to build communities and institutions where equity, access, and accountability are core values that guide us. In this way, we work to dismantle many forms of systemic oppression and support the dignity and worth of all people. I am here as a minister who also believes strongly in the separation of church and state, because I believe that public schools must meet the needs of all youth whom they serve, regardless of their cultural or religious background or any other identity that they hold. I don't think public schools can meet the needs of all students when they allow any religious organization to bring their values into the classroom or other spaces students are being served in. I support your decision to end a contractual relationship with a religious organization that does not share the core values of this district and its mission to serve without discrimination all students. Public institutions are necessarily pluralistic and should be careful to ensure that they serve all equitably. For the community gathered here, I hope that we can build the kind of support in our communities that our youth need to ensure their well-being and their success as students and as people, and I thank you for your...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker. Sir? Can you state your name and the topic in which you...in who you represent?
Hello? Chuck.
And if you want to just tap the top of it, too, if you feel...until we kind of hear something. Here we go.
My name is Chuck Foreman. There we go.
And this is why we're going to go ahead and exceed our one hour with all thirty-two speakers, so that we recognize that this has been problematic, due to no far over-armed technology has a mind of itself. So, sir, I apologize.
No need to apologize.
You may continue.
My name is Chuck Foreman. I'm pastor at First Christian Church here in Phoenix. Dr. Stanton, honorable board members, you are more than gracious to sit and listen to all this, and I thank you for that. Along with everybody else who wanted to speak tonight, I had my airtight presentation, world-changing thing ready for you, but I've decided to take a different approach. After witnessing...okay. After witnessing the antagonism and polarizing experience that's happening outside our building tonight...
Can we pause the time, please? Do we understand what the feedback situation is about? Oh, I was just brought to the attention that the media has several wire mics wrapped around our mic, and that is causing some feedback issues.
Is this better?
No.
Okay. Over here. Any better?
We won't make you do the hokey pokey, I promise. Are you able to put a certain amount of time back on the clock, Ms. Tucker?
I have set one, two, three, so I either pause or I start.
Okay, I am going to go ahead and give you approximately fifteen seconds past clock time. Please continue.
Thank you. After witnessing the polarizing experience outside this building, I've decided to take a different approach, and I would like to say to all my Christian brothers and sisters in the room, that when we can demean and castigate people who disagree with us and in the same breath sing songs to Jesus and pray in His name, we give the very one that we claim to follow a bad rap, and we have missed Him completely, and we need to go back and read the book that we claim to follow and pay closer attention to the way that Jesus would do things. And by the way, board, I was part of a conversation with Len Munsel outside the building, and who is president of Arizona Christian University. He had no idea and is not responsible for what is happening across the street here. So you all need to know that as well. It's clear to any thinking individual that the board decision necessarily discriminates against a certain class of teachers, namely who have been trained at a Christian university, not just Arizona Christian University, and it extrapolates out necessarily to anyone who might wear that name, and don't think...
Yes, that's time. Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Next speaker, please.
Can you... Good, can you hear me?
Yes. State your name.
Amanda Hess, and I am a teacher in the school district.
Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about two issues that ACU decision and stipends. I'm a teacher, but I am not religious. I do feel that certain Christian traditional values are outdated and hold prejudices, but I can separate those from my career. I'm concerned and saddened that you've taken this opportunity to be a teacher away from potential students at ACU who could have made a positive impact on our children. This decision was made carelessly and filled with biases and presumptions. Your action to end the contract with ACU sends a message that all individuals from that institution will potentially be biased and unfair. This is a negative presumption and not aligned with the values I thought W E S D stood for, and using your elected platform to bring in your own values in the district is demonstrating a double standard. You've shown the nation that any Christian in W E S D or person who shares similar views with ACU are not valued and should be afraid of your power impacting their livelihoods in this district. We have many Christian teachers, students, and staff in W E S D. How do you think this decision is making them feel? Isn't your purpose to support inclusion and not exclude and ostracize groups of people? The perception that you think by giving them a contract and they will influence our students with religious doctrine, that decision was unsound, unfair, and biased, and that just ain't right. Teachers choose W E S D to teach a particular curriculum. There are no state standards that promote what you are suggesting teachers from ACU promote. Teachers come to W E S D to teach kids. The next thing quickly is retention stipends. The perception of this board is that you hold more value in a teacher with little to no training than teachers who have been specifically trained and worked here for years. When will your priority be those of us who continue to serve? In closing, I wish our board would do a better job of advocating for quality teachers, modeling fair practices, and making decisions that exponentially impact the greater good, which is quality education. As a whole, this board is not holding true to W E S D values. I guess what I'm saying is maybe staff should vote no on continuing this partnership with our governing board. I hope you reconsider your decision and are more mindful of drastic and bias-based decisions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I hope you reconsider your decision and are more mindful of drastic and bias-based decisions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please. Please state your name and where you live or who you're representing.
My name is Richard Claus. We've lived in the district for about 25 years. My wife and I have lived and raised our three children in the past 25 years within the boundaries of the Washington Elementary School District. I want to first say that I express my sorrow that you have received abuse and threats, since I am sorry for them. I've also served for a part-time as a pastor of an evangelical church within the borders of the district, and under my watch, we maintain an active and mutually beneficial relationship with the nearest school. At the core of my being, I'm a follower of Jesus Christ within the conservative evangelical tradition of Christianity. What most concerns me about the recent decision with ACU is the reasoning offered by this Board. In particular, the words of the President of the governing Board struck me as excessively intrusive and discriminatory. In particular, she spoke about a Christian's core beliefs and said, "I simply don't know how a piece of paper can change somebody's underlying value system. Even though they may not do anything illegal, they are preaching or using the Bible verses, how do you shut off an essential part of your being?" Note the criteria being used here. It is not enough that a potential teacher be competent and compassionate, or added to this, someone who brings value to the classroom, school, and district, or again, added to this, someone who objectively abides by the stated policies and goals of the district as articulated in their written documents. No, according to the President of this Board and those who did not contravene her thinking, the person's underlying value system, which is an essential part of their being, must be changed. Consistency of application, I would argue, to this line of thought would seem to require an ideological purge of current teachers and staff who uphold the historically rooted Christian view of sexuality as articulated by Jesus Christ. Only God Himself has the authority to compel a person's core allegiance, even with a person's conscience. As an institution committed to the advancement of public education, I would ask you to forsake the politics of exclusion and discrimination and pursue a more reasoned path which benefits all peoples in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Please state your name and the community you represent and the topic you want to address.
My name is Marshall Militano. I reside in LD 27, and I come in support, obviously, with Ms. Valenzuela and this Board's decision. I am a Christian. I was raised in a Christian home. The words of Christ have been infused and abused by a Christian right that is beyond words. I'm ashamed sometimes to tell people that I am a Christian because of the way the church has taken its turn in society. We are to live our faith. Living our faith is embracing the world, for God so loved the world. Not a particular person, a group, a culture, but the world. Christ had more to say and got angry at the church, never against a person that was believed to be a sinner. I'm here in support of your decision. You know, the university, as a private university, has the right to pick and choose who can go to school there or work there. You don't. And as an employee, a previous employee of a school district in procurement, in the garage, I understand that you have the right to either continue a contract or not continue it. And I don't believe anything discriminatory was done here. If the values of the organization does not match public school, then so be it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Crystal. Please state your name and who you're representing.
Hello, my name is Crystal Carrillo, and I'm a resident in this legislative district that covers several school districts, including Washington Elementary. Can I start? Okay. I am sharing my support for school Board member Valenzuela and all the Board members as a whole. Board member Valenzuela made her commitment to run for this office on a kind, inclusive, and community-driven strategy, and that's why I supported her. She has continued her leadership with that in mind. This next statement pertains to the decision made to cut ties with ACU. My understanding on this decision is ACU was not providing what the original partnership entailed, which was recruitment and retention of teachers into the district. I also know that ACU has discriminatory language that is harmful toward LGBTQIA+ members of our community like myself. All of that to say, the Constitution of the United States calls for separation of church and state. I support the Board's decision wholeheartedly, and in fact, I don't view this in any way as being anti-Christian. What would be anti-Christian is a bunch of people making death threats and attacking you all online and even attacking me online when I put in a comment for support. But I digress. All of this to say that I appreciate your work as elected officials who give your time and energy to one of the most important volunteer elected positions in the state. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker?
Please state your name and who you represent. Can you hear me?
Hi, everybody. My name is Jeannie Castine. Good evening, Madam President, Board members, and Cabinet. I'm actually a recent transplant to the WESD district, and I just want to thank you so much for not renewing the contract with Arizona Christian University. As a former teacher, I understand the teacher retention crisis in Arizona, but just because we're struggling to keep teachers in the classroom does not mean that we should partner with organizations that weaponize the idea of religious belief to require its students to sign a statement of faith that says homosexuality is a sin and offensive to God. There's nothing Christian about that. Your decision shows that you care about all of your students, families, faculty, and staff, and I'm grateful to this Board for standing up against religiously justified bigotry. The Establishment Clause exists to protect both believers and nonbelievers despite recent attempts to favor one religion over any other, over those of us who consider ourselves nuns, meaning none of the above. I appreciate your understanding of the Establishment Clause, the separation of church and state, and your commitment to support all of your constituents in your district. Your vote shows that everyone in WESD matters to you and that you will not allow discrimination to happen on your watch, and I appreciate you all beyond measure. Thank you for stepping up to defend the diversity of the students in your district.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Janine Gelsinger, and I'm the Executive Director of Unitarian Universalist Justice Arizona. In my role, I run a statewide organization that organizes people of faith to put action to their values. And what better example of putting action to your values than the vote that you took last week to make sure that you are keeping your school free from discrimination against LGBTQ students and teachers? When religion is used to attack folks who have stood up and done the right thing, then it is my job to come and speak about what my religion says. As a Unitarian Universalist, we believe in the inherent worth and dignity of all people and that LGBTQ people like myself are whole, holy, and good, the way that we are. If I were to be in contract as a teacher in this school district or send my queer child to the school, I would be afraid of the language in that contract because I would worry about the discrimination possibilities for my children and against my religious values. And so, I wanted to come here today just to express my gratitude for your decision to keep your school a place where all children can be valued and learn and that teachers can have an environment to work in where they are recognized as whole and wonderful people just the way they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Please state your name and where you represent.
Hi, I'm Allison Hoover. I reside in Washington School District. I have three kids. The oldest will be going to kindergarten in 2024. I sub for the district, and I am an alumni of ACU Education Department, class of 2015. What I want to talk about is just what I was taught as an ACU grad in elementary department, and it was to love each and every student, no matter what their beliefs were, no matter what, where they came from, no matter who they were, to respect them, to have compassion, to show grace, to make them feel safe in the classroom. I would like to still see the ACU students be able to be student teachers in the classroom because I believe that is what they are coming to do, to love students. We are not told to indoctrinate any students. We're not told to talk to them about the religion. We are told to love the students, to accept the students, respect the students. And I do want to add that as when I student-taught, we are always under a mentor teacher, and the mentor teacher was with us at all times so that they know what is being said in the classrooms at all times. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Everyone, my name is Kailyn Dalmada. I'm Christian. I'm representing Christians. I echo everything that was lovely about what she just said, but I do have my own things to say to you all. I'm here today to challenge you guys as a school board as a whole and specifically Ms. Valenzuela. For spearheading the unanimous vote to sever the relationship between ACU and WESD, which is a clear act of extreme left-wing, anti-Christian religious discrimination and hatred, the community in which this school district exists is made up of at least 70% Hispanic and other people of color in their families and children, and a few research shows that 71% of Latinos in Arizona identify as Christian or Catholic, some form of Christian or Catholic. And so, I believe that you have students here and families that are of this faith, and I don't believe that removing this relationship that the school district had with ACU is going to cause anyone to be more safe or unsafe. And I would rather say it's unsafe that all of you can make that decision and be in control of so many impressionable children's lives. And I believe that the community will see through this facade. And let me ask you, if Christian teachers existing make you all feel unsafe because their righteous beliefs, what's next and what message are you sending to the children who are Christian students? Are you guys going to purge them? Because how are you going to get their Christian beliefs out of their head? How are you going to do it? Do you think by removing the teachers that somehow, all of a sudden, that their deeply held beliefs are going to be relinquished? There's 150 churches within the confines, approximately, of the school district perimeters. So, there is a lot of people here who are Christian who do want to fight back, and I have three demands. That you reinstate.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next. Thank you. Please state your name and who you represent.
My name is Beth Golden, and I am an employee of the district. Hello. My name is Beth Golden, and I am one of the supervisory nurses for the district. My family and I have been in the district since the 70s. I am here regarding the decision made by the Board on February 23rd. It was wrong for so many reasons. I am disheartened, to say the least, and it gives me pause that instead of bringing knowledge, integrity, and fairness to this table, you choose to make a one-dimensional decision based on fear, ignorance, persecution, and hatred. The world does not need any more of that. Shame on you all. You are doing a disservice to all of our children, even the LGBTQ kids. But I'm hoping that you will learn from your mistake and you will work to make it right. There is no shame in that. Do better. Prove to us that we did not make a mistake electing you. I want to leave you with a quote from Bell Hooks, an American author and social activist that you may be familiar with. "I want there to be a place in the world where people can engage in one another's differences in a way that is redemptive, full of hope and possibility." That place could be WESD with the right leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tucker, is there any other? All right. That is our last public comment. At this point, I want to remind the audience, both here and who may be watching, the Board is not allowed to discuss or respond to comments made during public comment that are not agendized, and the ACU decision was not agendized for this evening. We do have the right to respond to personal attacks, and given that the Board in general was addressed and accusations made, I will give all Board members an opportunity to respond specifically to attacks with regards to their decision if they so wish, also to Ms. Valenzuela, to any of the personal attacks or allegations that were made to you specifically. I will ask that we all recognize that it is 9:00 PM and we still have an agenda, and so I will begin those responses, and then we will move on to our consent agenda. However, before we begin that, we may recess for a brief break to allow those that would like to head home or those on the dais that have been here for a very long time that might need a bio break. We're going to take a small recess after the Board has afforded the opportunity to respond to specific allegations or personal attacks. Thank you. Ms. Valenzuela.
I think this is an important time for us to understand the difference between a personal attack and systemic bias and bigotry. No one on this Board has stated that Christian teachers will not be allowed within this district. What has been said, though, because it appears that listening to actual words are not happening, is that an agreement with an institution that allows bigotry within its core values is what was terminated. There is a difference between institutional discrimination and personal discrimination. And I'm going to say this, I'll be damned if any of our students feel like the only way out is to not live or not exist or be closeted, and that's any student. So, I implore you all to really digest that and understand the difference, because what we're talking about right here is an institution, not a person, not a teacher, not student teachers. We are talking about an institution that has caused harm. And anyone who has worked with young people also knows that sometimes our young people don't have language or words to address the things that they've been through, and that sometimes when people are well-intentioned, like the "love the sinner, hate the sin," that also causes great harm. So, understand the difference between institutional bigotry and people being excluded.
Are there any other board members which to make a statement?
Because I was included in the allegations that myself, I'll speak for myself, are anti-Christian or do not value Christians, or believe that all Christians hold the same beliefs. That is not accurate. I echo Ms. Valenzuela's statement that this is an institution, and it's an agreement between two institutions. And my understanding is that when we're talking about an institution and what partnerships we make, we have discretion there to say that one institution may not, regardless if it's a faith-based institution or community organization, we have that discretion to say, does this align? I echo, there is absolutely nothing that came from my mouth that indicates, and I'm going to be very clear, that we are not willing to hire anyone, staff, teachers, et cetera, from religious schools or from religious institutions. So that is all I have to say about that. And I will now move over to consent agenda. But before we do that, we are going to recess for approximately five minutes.
We're going to go ahead and rebegin the meeting, so board members, if you can return Okay, Ms. Tucker, we're going to reconvene the general meeting at 9:17 PM. Board members, we are at consent agenda, and I am requesting a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
I'll second.
I thought we were racing, sorry.
So I have a first by Ms. Abbott Biardi and a second by Ms. Peterson. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Was that second by Ms. Peterson or Ms.?
I think I edged her out just by a tiny bit.
Okay, Ms. Peterson's got the second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And before we move on, is there anything that anyone wishes to pull from the consent agenda?
We just.
Oh, we approved it. Sorry, I thought we were approving them, and so we already approved the agenda. So let me take a moment to thank our gifts and donations. I would like to thank Christina Martinez, who donated to Tumbleweed, and also the Washington Education Foundations for their CEP programming. Thank you so much for your contributions to WESD. That moves us to our action items. Correct? Okay. And for this, I'm going to invite Mr. Decker to the podium to just introduce himself. You can then have a seat, and then we will call on you if we need any further clarifications
My name is Roger Decker. I'm the law firm of Udall Schumway in Mesa, and I am counsel for the district in this procurement issue and available to answer questions that may come to me.
Mr. Decker, and we will call, the board may call on Mr. Decker if they have any clarification As the board remembers, we had a legal executive session, so that will remain an executive session. However, no action is taken in executive session, and so we have before us this potential action item. And what we are looking at, as a reminder for those that are following this, is we have a procurement issue in which our insurance trust went out for a procurement, and please, Mr. Decker, you can always come and correct me if I'm wrong, and made a decision to not go with a recommendation, and that led to an injunction. And actually, I'm going to have you come up and explain that, because I'm going to miss the legal word, so I'm going to have you just say it. And just the brief overview of what brings us here today.
Yes. So, yes, there's this RFP that went out, there were three offer orders that made proposals. As you indicated, the trust board went through the evaluation recommendations, and then ultimately chose to cancel the solicitation. And as a result of that, there's been a bid protest, and we've discussed in executive session just the legalities of that issue.
Thank you. So what we have before us now is how the board will proceed, given that the major issue being that in the past, this board has delegated the responsibility of these types of matters regarding our insurance to our insurance board trust. However, it was found that an agreement was not in place, and so this has now come before the board. And we are charged with creating a solution to this situation, and board members have had an opportunity to ask their questions. And so I will turn it over to any board members that wish to either ask a question or state their opinion in terms of what action to pursue. Okay, it doesn't look like there's much comment on this. I'm not sure if anyone has a motion. The one thing that I do want to say, my concern being is, we generally do turn this over to our trust to take care of. That has been the historic process. And with clerical issues, we now find ourselves in the position of having to make this, where we generally delegate that to a board trust. And it is important to understand that oftentimes, like our own board, we will send things for advisement or recommendation, but we may or may not always agree with the recommendations that are brought forth. And so it is important that we find a balance between recognizing the process on the administrative side, but also recognizing that we have yielded this decision-making to our trust board. And so I don't wish to undermine that body either. That being said, we do now need to figure out what to do, and as we can see here, there are various options for that. Since there is no discussion, I'm going to ask to see if any board member wishes to make a motion for a particular course of action.
I wasn't, I'm sorry.
Ms. Peterson.
Thank you. I wasn't able to attend the executive session because I was able to attend the Choya Band Concert that my son was participating in instead. But I do serve on the trust board, so I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of what's going on. And so just to be clear, our options, as I understand them, are, sorry, Mr. Decker, to call you back up here. You're getting your squats in today. Do I detect a little bit of a Utah accent?
No, born and raised, fifth-generation Arizonan.
Oh, it's a Mesa accent, though, then, right?
I was actually, I was raised here in this district.
Oh, wow. You've just become accustomed to that East Valley accent.
Maybe so.
I like it. All right, sorry. So our options are to accept the proposal as it was given to us, as it was given to the trust board, the recommendation, excuse me, accept the recommendation as it was given to the trust board and sort of override their vote, to kind of restart the process over.
Sure, let me, maybe I can articulate.
I'm sure you can articulate.
There's about three, there's three logical, three logical options. I'll explain the two parameters first, because that's visually able to understand that. One is, as you articulated, just accept the recommendations of the evaluation committee and go ahead and vote to award the contract to the party that was identified by the nomination, by the evaluation committee. The other extreme, on the far side of the other side, is to just vote to approve the decision of the trust board, which was to cancel the solicitation. A middle ground is to say, we think we need more information, and ask the evaluation committee to get from administration and council a few more questions to go back to ask the three offers, to get that and see if there's any change then in their evaluation and their report that they were going to do from, based upon the information that they received. And a sub-option of that one, if we've gone that far, we're also able then to get, to ask the three offerors for what is called a best and final offer, which means exactly what it sounds like.
Okay. I thank you for that. If that's the case, then I would like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the district and go with the organization, I believe it was Valley Schools, that won that recommendation. I don't know if it's a win, but were recommended by the administration.
I second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, and I'm going to offer an opportunity for any further discussion. My particular concern around that is there was concerns that I believe, based on the information provided, would cause someone to want additional information. And so I don't think that starting over is probably the best bet, because, for those that don't understand, this consultant that the bid was out for helps in the decision-making around employee benefits, and that process has been held up. around employee benefits and that process has been held up as we don't, we have quote-unquote, quotes for insurance coverages that we need somebody to review and, and make it, help us make a decision on. And so until that happens, we can't secure benefits. And so, and, and starting over would require us to go through the process again, which can take, I believe Mr. O'Brien said, anywhere between six to nine weeks. And so that would move us pretty far into this, this next contract year. I kind of appreciate, so I, I will, you know, obviously, we can go ahead and vote, but now that I'm, I'm thinking here and I wanted to give people an opportunity, I kind of like option B, which is to allow the evaluation committee to ask the offerers for some clarification and present a first and final, but that is, I'm not making a motion, I'm explaining.
You're offering a second option?
No, I'm simply explaining why we have a first and a second, so we can vote on that, but I'm offering discussion. We can still have discussion after a first and a second. And so I'm just sharing that information prior to our, our vote, but I am going to go ahead and call for the vote. If we have a first by Ms. Peterson and we have a second from Ms. Abbott Bardi, I'm going to ask for those that are, oh, Ms. Peterson.
Sorry, I just, I want to say like, I, I appreciate that perspective. There was a lot of information given and, and having been on the trust board, I, I just want to say, having seen some of that information, I feel like we have what we need to make this decision. So I just, I, I've been a little bit of a different situation because I, you know, was involved in that decision and it, it was a split decision and I, I just feel like, having seen what we have, I don't know what else we could ask for.
Can, can I ask a clarification question because you did vote on this?
Correct.
Which way did you vote on this? To go with the recommendation or to not?
Yes.
Okay. And so that is a concern because the body voted not to go with the recommendation and so I do want to try to respect that because this, our own body here has chosen not to necessarily go with our recommendations. So that's the concern that I pose, but I, I totally recommend that we go through with the vote because we do have a first and a second and I do appreciate your service on that board and that you have internal information, but the vote was not unanimous, so.
Correct, it was not unanimous either way.
All right, so we have a first and we have a second. Can we do a roll call vote, Ms. Decker? Ms. Jenny Abbott Bardi?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Clayton?
No.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Valenzuela?
Can I explain my vote?
Yes, absolutely.
I also want us to understand that in not moving forward, we are delaying and causing the district, you know, problems with getting our benefits together, getting things rolling. You know, it's not as simple as just like, we'll do this and wait an extra nine weeks. Like, we're in a stage where we really need to have some answers, so it's important to me that we move forward and that we trust our administration, so I just wanted to vote yes.
Ms. Valenzuela?
I'm going to vote now.
Ms. Whaley, Gomez Whaley?
I have a clarification question before I make my, my vote because my understanding is, and this might, I don't know if this is Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Decker, I do not want to delay benefits either, which is why I don't like, I didn't like the first option, but my understanding is it would not take that many weeks. And so I guess I'm asking, how long would it take to have that option where we go back and get some clarification and then provide a best and final offer?
I believe, I believe that if you ask administration and, and myself to put together a list of questions to go back, I believe that that could be done in a week's time and therefore the interviews by the evaluation committee could be done two weeks, 10 days from now, in the second week from now. I think you could have the whole thing wrapped up in two weeks. Well, be back to, be back to you to, be back to your next board meeting, I guess, would be if we can get on the agenda to, to have that report.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President, Board Members, Mr. Decker. Mr. Decker said it at the very end, it would probably take about a week to get best and finals, you have to give them time to do their due diligence, but then we'd have to wait for the following board meeting to come back to make a, to make an award. I'm not sure when our next board meeting is.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? As a board, could we make a decision to have a special session to rule on this matter? Since what I'm hearing is that it can be completed within two weeks, would it be possible to convene just to make a decision on that so it's not delayed until April?
I will go ahead and answer that. We do not currently have a regular scheduled board meeting scheduled for the 23rd, however, it is a possibility and given that there's a lot of different personnel and issues that are coming, that, that might be a necessity that the administration has, has expressed could happen. So we absolutely could call for that if we needed to. All right, so thank you for that clarification. Given that this does not seem like it will significantly delay benefits, as I understand the, things are already there, we just need somebody to review them, we've already been getting the, the quotes and things from insurance companies and so this shouldn't delay that and commitment from the board to address this assumes possible once those final bids have come through. I'm going to go ahead and vote no. So. Motion fails. With that, I'm going to go ahead and, and make a different motion that we go with option B, in which we ask our legal counsel and administration to come up with additional questions and, and ask for best and final officers, offers from all offerers. It's a hard word to say.
I will second that motion.
Okay, with the first and the second, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a roll call vote. I will go the opposite way this time. Ms. Gomez Whaley?
Aye.
Ms. Valenzuela?
Aye.
Ms. Peterson?
No.
Mr. Clayton?
Aye.
And Ms. Abbott Bardi?
No.
The motion passes 3-2. Thank you. We are now going to move to our acceptance, the potential action is the acceptance of our financial compliance audit for the fiscal year. And for that, I'm going to have Mr. O'Brien introduce our speaker.
Thank you, Madam President, Government Board Members. Just a quick little background on this, we have always brought the audit and presented at the board, but several years ago, the legislature made a change that you have to vote on the audit, which we haven't had done in the past. So that was the first time last year and so now we're here again. And we'd like to introduce Ms. Brittany Williams from Hindfield Meach.
Thanks, Dani. Madam President, Members of the Board, Superintendent Stanton, thank you so much for having me here tonight. I know it's a busy evening, I will not take a lot of your time, I will give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you have on the reports, but I'm going to go through them fairly quickly and just give you a high-level overview. I believe that you got hard copies maybe in front of you, as well as a lot of uploaded documents, so we'll just start with the large, the largest one. This is the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the Financial Statements of the District of Washington Elementary School District. I will draw your attention to pages eight and nine. These are really important because this is where the school district gets the awards for filing early, for filing on December 31st of every year. These are the awards for last year in certificates of excellence and financial reporting. You do have to be early and file early and, and be very prepared to do this for a district of this size. I mean, it's just very commendable that everybody works really hard and I'd like to start by, before I forget, acknowledging Dani and LeAnn Gallagher and their team and everybody in finance and everybody at the schools. I mean, we talk to a lot of people when we're out here, so big thanks to everybody and all their hard work. Page 15, that's the next page I wanted to talk about, and this is our Independent Auditors' Report. So this is where we say whether or not we believe the financial statements were materially correct. They were, we had no issues there, we opined, we gave a clean opinion on the financial statements. There is a section directly after that called the Management's Discussion and Analysis, it's about 15 pages long. If you really want to get an overview of what happened financially year over year from last year to this year, this is a really great place to get that narrative behind the financial statements. So that would be the place that I would look if you were going to look anywhere in the financial statements to kind of get some information. Is there any questions on the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report?
Board Members? Okay.
No, I, I'll just say, as somebody that's been here for six years, we've done this audit, do we do it annually, right? Or by, yes.
And we do it a lot. And we've always had very good reports. We had them with our former financial directors and I'm glad to see that that's continuing under our current financial management teams. So much kudos to Mr. O'Brien and our finance team, as well as the campuses that manage funds and, and have to do reporting requirements and all of that as well. It's a lot of work on our office managers' principles, et cetera, so I do want to thank them for their hard work because we do consistently do well on this and I'm always grateful to see you every year to, to give us this bit of good news because we do get a lot of scrutiny on how we spend our money and how we operate and I'm, I'm always very proud to say that we do our very best here at WSD to make sure that we're compliant with all of the things that we need to be, so thank you. Yeah, I do have just a few more points and reports, if that's okay? I'm so sorry. So there, there are a couple of other reports, as Madam President just mentioned, there's a lot of compliance issues. The auditor, the Office of the Arizona Auditor General issues this next document called the Uniform System of Financial Records Compliance Questionnaire. It has over 250 individual questions on compliance that have to be, you know, complied with at all of the school sites, as well as the district office itself. We have to answer yes, no, or NA to every single question. There's a few NAs in there, or a few no's in there with comments. If you have any questions on those, feel free to ask me. There were no huge concerns in any specific area from my perspective. The amount of findings is pretty similar to districts of this size. Any questions on that one? And I just have one more. Okay, the last one is the Single Audit Report. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, was that this document you were speaking about?
No, that looks like it's a detailed list of findings. This is, it's like a 26-page document that looks like this with the staple in it, just paper.
We don't have a paper version, Board. That's going to be in your, the board docs that was sent. So yeah, the only paper, that, it was a little confusing because in past years, we have had lots of different paper. This year, we just have a paper of the really big giant report and all the other reports were the ones that you saw attached to the agenda item.
Yes, okay. The last report I wanted to touch on here was just the Washington Elementary School District Single Audit Report. And this is a brief synopsis of our review of all of the federal compliance requirements, so I know that that's a big concern to many people. If you look to page nine, that will give you a great summary of our audit results for the financial statement and report, as well as the federal compliance piece of things. And then it'll tell you which federal programs we tested this year. So ESER is in there. We were required by the federal government to test the Education Stabilization Fund pretty much everywhere if it went above a certain amount, so, and that was tested. It's the Assistance Listing Number 84425. We gave clean opinions on the financial statements, as well as internal controls and over the federal awards. There was a finding noted and the corrective action plan by management has been implemented and that is in this report as well. Are there any questions about this report? Okay, the only last thing I wanted to mention, yes ma'am?
Hold on just a moment. I did just want to make sure I understood what I was seeing there on the Title I Grants Local Education. Which portion of the title, the entire one, or was there a specific portion that you looked at?
Yeah, so it's interesting how the, the state and the school districts definitely labeled the awards differently. So as you can see with like Education Stabilization Fund, that encompasses ESER I, ESER II, ESER III, GEAR, like it has all these different grants in it. Title I probably is a little bit similar to that, but it is just the 84.010, so it doesn't include any of the other title grants, migrant, improving teacher quality, anything like that, but it is all of Title I.
And can you remind folks, because a lot of people hear, oh, you're, we are Title I schools. Can you just very briefly explain, like the Title I that they're looking at, are the funds specifically related to what types of services?
So, well, you might be able to answer that better.
For maybe Mr. O'Brien or Ms. Moore, I know that's under her department.
Yeah, so Madam President, Board Members, so Title I is just one of it, as Ms. Williams says, they didn't test Title II, Title IV, Indian Ed, all that. We are a Title I, a very large Title I school, so we provide services through our Title I dollars for social workers, for paraprofessionals, for instructional assistance at the, at the school level, at our schools, and that's a good portion of it. We then do do some work with some supplies and some curriculum and professional development and other items.
Thank you, and I just wanted to point that out that we have a lot of federal grants and as you said, this is just the, the one of them, but it's one of our biggest ones and I think it's important for us to take acknowledgement of that because we have to apply, I mean, some of that's automatically based on some of our demographic, but it also helps when we're compliant with federal grants, when we go out for other federal grants. So I do thank Ms. Moore and the grants, the federal title department, because I know that they're, take the lion's share of managing those funds and ensuring that the documentation is in place.
And I will make it known that there were no issues of internal control deficiencies or non-compliance for any of the federal grants that we tested, so that's very good and considering the size of them even as well. And then just the last point I wanted to make is that you all should have received from me a direct communication to governance. I send that every year after the audit and with any, if there was any fraud that we found or disagreements with management or anything along those lines, that would be included in that letter. There was nothing of that nature, but you'll receive that letter from me every year and then we always call at least one board member to interview during the audit so that you have a chance to ask us any questions and that we have open communication throughout the year with you, so. Any other comments or questions for me this evening?
Okay.
Does not look like it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Madam President, Board Members, just in closing, unless you have questions for me afterwards, but I do want to again thank the staff in the finance department and LeAnn and everybody who works real hard in the schools and, and Registration Center, they, you know, transportation, procurement, they really do look at all, all departments in their audit, as she mentioned, over approximately 250 questions. But what I also want to do is, we, we take this back, myself, LeAnn, the finance team, and we use it as a training tool of where do we have to go train staff if we did have some small findings. So we do look at that and then place in a program of where we have to go look and try to fix it and I know LeAnn tracks some of this stuff and we have, we have findings, we're a large district, you know, added 250 questions, we're down about four, four percent in the finding range, so that's pretty good if you look at it. But most of our findings show up once, we train, we talk about it, we discuss, and then, and then they usually aren't there the following years. Remembering that we've just gotten these reports over the past couple of months, so we're already six months into, into the year, so we do some training in spring, so I just want to mention that and thank, thank the staff and, and the schools for doing that for us.
Great, thank you. So we do have a action item and there's a recommended action here. If you look on the Agenda Detail, Recommended Action, would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Clayton?
That the board accept the Financial Audit and Compliance Questionnaire from Hindfield Meach for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Do I have a second, Ms. Abbott Bardi?
I second.
We got a second for Ms. Abbott Bardi. All those in favor, please say aye.
May aye.
Aye, any opposed? We have to do a roll call vote on this, it's statutorily required. Thank you for that. Sorry, Board Members, we do need to do a roll call, that is a statutory requirement for this particular type of item. So Ms. Tucker? Ms. Jenny Abbott Bardi?
Sorry, Board members, we do need to do a roll call. That is a statutory requirement for this particular type of item. So Ms. Tucker?
Ms. Jenny Abbott-Biardi?
Yay.
Mr. Clayton?
Aye.
Ms. Peterson?
Aye.
Ms. Valenzuela?
Aye.
Ms. Gomez-Waley?
Aye.
And that motion carries.
That brings us to Action Item C, which is the discussion, potential action around the ESER Relief Retention Stipends. And I believe we're going to ask Mr. Mattingly to present for us.
Okay, Madam President, Governing Board members. As a reminder, February 23rd, district leadership recommended a one-time retention stipend using the ESER III funds for the four different categories of classified non-exempt, certified exempt, classified, and our administrative staff. Based on feedback and conversation during that governing board meeting, I am here tonight to present an additional, a different recommendation, and that is as follows. The four categories, classified non-exempt, 14% retention stipend, certified exempt, 8% retention stipend, classified exempt, 7% retention stipend, admin staff, 3.3 retention stipend. These stipends are all based on their actual FTE annual salary. Next slide, please. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So the requirements and eligibility, based on the month of March here, and the governing board is reviewing this recommendation, any staff member that is hired or working before March 31st would qualify this, not to exceed a 1FTE. Again, it's important to have the language in there based off their actual FTE, their position. This payment is, if approved, would go throughout the week of September 25 through 29. That's right before fall break, before all of our staff go on that fall break. So pay that, that's one-time retention stipend out before they go on that fall break. Next slide, there it is. So on the far left, there's numerous columns here, starting at the far right, excuse me, the percentage of the FTE group. Those numbers there reflect the makeup of those four categories on the far left called employee type. So an example would be our administration staff makes up about 3.7% of our staff in this district. And our teachers, just roughly under 60%. And our classified exempt, just a little bit above 10%. Those are OTPT, social workers, directors. So the classified non-exempt is a little bit below 27%. So with that, these stipends that are here, these are all 1FTEs, by the way, to ensure that we have some quality, reasonable data. If we did all employees with different FTEs from starting at .25 all the way up to 1.0, it would really skew the data a little bit per se. So this is just 1FTE employees, and that's why you see the cost of $10.8 million. Down below it is 13 point, $13 million. That includes all the other not, just, not your 1FTE, but anyone below a 1FTE. And so all costs for these stipend percentages are roughly $13 million.
Can we return to that previous slide, I think? And just for clarification, I mean, many, probably people in this room understand, but a full-time employee, meaning that they are a full-time staff, full-time hours. And so that $10 million includes everybody that has a full-time contract or agreement with the district, and the extra $3 million are for those that work part-time in some capacity?
That is correct. 1FTE means 40 hours a week or an exempt 1FTE.
Thank you. And to clarify, we have separate things on the agenda. This is very specifically around ESER retention stipends that would go into effect in the next school year, for those that are still with the, in the district as of the 31st date that was stated. So I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions. Ms. Peterson?
Thank you. So just to recap, last board meeting, there was a motion to table this item because the board was seeking more information. I appreciate this table is the information that I was seeking in that meeting. I voted not to table it. And so I was surprised when we were called into meetings, one-on-one meetings as board members to meet with administration and presented an entirely new pay structure. I was under the impression that we were seeking information to understand a little bit more how those stipends were reasoned and, you know, kind of, this is beautiful data. I really appreciate it and this is what I wanted. So when we came back and were given this new information, I was taken aback. And it is, and for that reason, I want to value the work of IBN that put in time and energy and effort to create the stipends that were created, not these, the old ones. I want to value that work that was created by that original IBN team that met. Those weren't created by IBN, no. Okay, I want to value the work that was created by IBN last year when they did retention stipends? Never, okay.
You're really ruining my speech here, Steve. So these ESER III recommendations, not these ones, the ones that we saw last time also came from administration?
Yeah, Madam President, Governing Board members, the most recent ESER III retention stipends approved by the governing board last year was a district leadership recommendation and that was, last year, as a reminder, that was respectfully 4%, 6%, and 10%. And so our goal was to bring identical similarity, recommendation to this governing board, adding additional 2% based off of the savings and different monies left over that Mr. O'Brien can speak more elegantly about.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So I apologize for that misunderstanding on my part. That was, that was, yeah.
Just a quick one, I think Mr. Mattingly was 4, 6, and 8 last year. Is that correct?
4, 6, 8.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
But I do not feel that these new values, these new stipends recognize our, all of our staff in the way that we should and value them. I would like to make a motion that we bring back the stipends that we tabled and vote on those.
I second.
Before we make a vote on that, I'm going to go ahead and go around the dais and allow continued conversation and questioning. We do have a motion and we will vote on that motion, but a first and a second simply means that we will hear discussion on it. And so we are going to go ahead and continue to hear any other questions from the board before we make a vote on that particular motion. So Board members, are there any other questions with regards to what is presented here tonight?
I have a question.
Ms. Valenzuela?
So thank you for your concerns, Ms. Peterson. I would like to know just for clarification and refreshing, how do these stipends differ? Because my understanding from our last board meeting was that we wanted to make sure that those who don't necessarily, those who are most vulnerable as far as financial compensation receive more fun, a larger stipend to compensate for the fact that they get paid less. That was my understanding, that we did want to see new values based on that. And so what is the difference between the old values that Mrs. Peterson is referring to versus these new ones?
Madam President, Governing Board members, the old values, if I understand your question correctly, as far as the percentage of stipends per category, was 6%, 8% for both two categories, certified exempt and classified exempt, and then for classified non-exempt, 10%. Hourly wage, yeah.
Ms. Tucker, can you put that slide back up, please? So previously, Mr. Mattingly, the recommended admin stipend was what percent?
6% of Madam President, pardon me.
And previously, the certified exempt was? 8%, so that stayed the same. And previously, the classified exempt was?
8%.
Okay. And previously, the classified non-exempt was?
10%.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Valenzuela, as to what it was and what it is now? Okay. Before I ask questions, no other questions, Mr. Clayton? Did you have additional questions, Ms. Valenzuela?
I guess I just want clarification. And with the previous percentage, what would that then, in a roundabout way, make the stipends look like with the information that's right here? Because I do hear the comments that we did get back from our staff. I'm hearing what Mrs. Peterson is saying. And so I'm wondering, in a roundabout way, what do those numbers look like? Just ballpark-ish.
Well, instead of, Ms. Valenzuela, I understand what you're saying. I think that's, might speak a little bit to what, there's some confusion, it seems, on the board in terms of, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Ms. Peterson thought that there were questions that the board had in terms of what the previous percentage stipends looked like in real life terms for these different employee groups? Is that correct? And what I'm hearing Ms. Valenzuela said, saying is that we also expressed concern that the stipends may not be getting to those that are needing the additional pay bump in terms of, you know, they're underpaid or challenging positions and et cetera. So we had had that conversation where we talked a little bit about the distribution. So I think that there is some confusion because the questions were how was this decided? And I don't think that necessarily it was, while the expression of concern was that they might not have been equitably distributed, I don't think it was necessary to come with new numbers, but more, just more information as to how those were decided. And so while I think this does make an attempt of what I could understand, the administration thinking we want to reallocate funds, it sounds like there was maybe some misunderstanding in terms of what the board was seeking. Is that a fair assessment considering what both Ms. Peterson and Ms. Valenzuela had to say? That there is confusion with regards to what we were expecting to come back?
That I have confusion about what we were expecting to come back? Is that what you're saying? I'm sorry.
That there's not, there appears to not be an alignment between what the administration thought was expected of them to bring back and what you
Correct.
you thought that was going to be coming back.
Yeah, I mean, the motion was to table this in order to get more information. The motion was not to table this to get new stipend amounts.
And Ms. Valenzuela, did you believe that the motion was to table this to get new stipend amounts?
I'm going to be honest, I've experienced brain fog with the last week, so it's not as clear in my mind as far as whether or not we did specifically say new amounts. I originally thought that we were, we were looking at what it would look like to make it more equitable. I was not under necessarily the impression that we were, I thought we were going to have both pieces of information. So I think there was a hiccup in communication on both sides, possibly. And I do appreciate the work that has gone in into taking a look at this and putting this together. I would like to see what the other amounts were, or at the very least have a ballpark.
Yeah, it sounds like, and I'm going to get, it looks like Ms. Abbott-Biardi has a comment, but it does sound like while the discussion was there, there might have been a perceived ask in that, when really the ask was for more information, not an entirely new recommendation. And so I'm going to go ahead and let Ms. Abbott-Biardi speak.
Thank you, Madam President. So I have a quick question, just for clarification. The classified non-exempt, that's hourly, right? And they are not to ever exceed 40 hours theoretically, right? I mean, I mean, they
Madam President, Governing Board members, this, this approach and what we're doing, I'm not sure that's relevant to the case of how this is distributed. So I'm not, you know, but hourly wage can range from 10 hours a week or 40 hours a week.
Right. It is, in my mind, it's relevant in that class, so only classified non-exempt, we encourage them to never go above 40 hours, is that correct? Because we don't want to pay overtime and so forth.
No.
Classified non-exempt, right? That would be hourly people. And I'm not talking about their wage, I'm just saying hourly.
Madam President, Governing Board members.
They clock in, clock out.
Ideally, it's budgeted not to exceed what they were assigned.
An admin certified exempt and classified exempt is a salaried position, is that correct?
Madam President, Governing Board members, yes.
Right. So just what I've noticed in my long life, but also with my time spending at the schools and so forth, these, the admin certified and classified typically work many more hours than 40 hours a week. Would that be correct?
Madam President, Governing Board members, that is absolutely correct.
Right. So although these numbers look equal, they're not really equitable. And actually, they don't even really look completely equal. I'm not great at math, but it doesn't look like that. So because, because classified can't work more than 40 hours and it, non-exempt, and the other three categories almost never work just 40 hours. To me, it feels like this is not really, to me, it feels like we're not valuing those who work many more hours than 40 hours a week. So that is why, thank you, thank you very much. No, I'm just kidding. It's been a long night. So that is why I have a concern with this. I see that the numbers kind of, kind of look equal down the average stipend amount, but it's, it's not really, it's not equitable to what people are putting in for the hours. So that would be my only comment on why I second, going back to the original one.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott-Biardi. I think that is an important point that kind of goes back to the original one, which is a misunderstanding in terms of what we were expecting. Because the previous one, I think we were looking for something like this to explain the previous one and to understand a little bit more about how those numbers came up. Mr. Clayton, any questions on this or any comments? Okay. So now that everyone has had an opportunity to speak on the matter, I have a motion by Ms. Peterson to table? Is that correct?
I have a, it is recommended that the governing board approve the one-time percentage stipend, retention stipend as presented on February 23rd, 2023.
I am wondering, because that is not on the agenda.
Well, the stipend is on the agenda.
The stipend is on the agenda, okay. I was like, that's not what was presented here today, so I just wanted a clarification. So we can make a motion that is anything, it can be to approve this, it can be to modify this, it can be to do the other version. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we were able to follow through with that. So we have a motion on the table to approve the previous listed stipends with a request, I think, to see a similar table, just for background information at this point. I will add that caveat, but, and then we have a second to approve the previous stipends, which included a 6% admin, 8% certified, 8% classified exempt, and 10% on the, classified, sorry, so many different
so many different classes, oh, there we go, it's right there. So it was really messy. But again, I think Ms. Tucker has what we're talking about, which is basically to approve the previous levels.
That is the motion that I have, but I think we probably, for the audience, both in person, we want to specifically recite what percentages that we are, that you're recommending, sorry.
So Ms. Peterson, I don't know if you took notes from Mr. Mattingly?
I have it. Oh, is he going to, you're going to do it?
Madam President, Governing Board members, I'd like to request that we open up the document on February 23 and grab those numbers specifically, since that is Ms. Peterson's recommendation, just to verify that's exactly the numbers. Because we do not have those numbers in front of us right now.
Thank you. Ms. Tucker, can you go into our minutes and pull up the recommended stipends percentages from the 23rd?
Mr. Mattingly, I appreciate the recommendation. I do want to make sure everybody is very clear on what we're talking about, and I don't want to have any confusion, so thank you.
So, Ms. Peterson, as the person making the original motion, would you like to make your motion with the specific numbers presented?
I move that the board approve the ESER retention stipends in the amount of 10% for classified non-exempt, 7% for certified exempt and classified exempt, and 6% for administrative staff, as presented on the February 23 board meeting.
And Ms. Peterson, can you please clarify, is that starting back on that original 23rd date or would that still be the 31st date?
So, as presented, with the exception that the date is now changed to March 31st as a starting date or ending date for employment.
Thank you. Hearing that clarified motion, Ms. Abbott Bardi, do you still second? Thank you very much. We have a first and a second. Board members, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. And so we will move along to our next action and possible discussion item. And my board docs cut out, so if we can move to, oh, the presentation of the interest-based negotiation recommendations. Mr. Mattingly?
Governing Board President, Governing Board members, this is an IBN recommendation from the IBN team. The first slide I'd like to show is, one, to show the board our membership, but also to acknowledge all these members on here and thank them for their time, their effort, and sacrifices, and quality conversations, courageous conversations to bring this recommendation to this governing board tonight. As you can see, we have certified staff members, classified staff members, nine, nine apiece on each category, and then you have three administrators. And then the classified, certified, and the admin, those are your voting members. Those are the ones that place the vote and determine what comes to the board. The resources, those administration are there as a resource, as a host, to help provide information and do some research, et cetera, to help them make a quality decision based on what's in front of the governing board. With that, I'll go to the next slide. As a reminder, I won't read all of these. The governing board interest is as follows. That first bullet talks about providing an increase in salaries if possible for all employees. And what's been presented tonight by the IBN committee is exactly that, is dealing with salaries. So next slide? You're on the next slide, I'm looking at my computer, I apologize. It's important to, to show that and share with the governing board that almost every full IBN committee reviews the external factors that play a role in the decision-making when it comes to what we do, what the IBN team does recommend. And you can read through these, but you, these are, these are different external factors that directly impact the, our budget and our ability to recommend to the governing board these salaries. So, and, and, you know, you have the AEL on there, although the state recognized and passed that through for this year, but that will be another external factor next year. We will be dealing with that again, and so it's not fixed. It is not fixed. And so that's one of the things we deal with, inflation. And at last, real quick, we will deal, every January, minimum wage rising, and that is dependent upon the economy here in Arizona. And so far, it's averaging, give or take, about a dollar every year raising our minimum wage. And so those are just some of the, the external factors that we deal with when we, when the IBN team makes decisions. Next slide, please. So the first recommendation that the IBN committee is recommending is that all staff, that includes certified staff, classified exempt, classified non-exempt, as well as administration, receive a 3% salary increase on their full-time actual FTE salary. The eligibility for that is you must be in the hiring process and are working on prior to March 31st to receive that increase. Paying information that you can see here, that goes, starts the fiscal year July 1. Next slide, please. Sorry. Here's a graph for the governing board to review it. You see the categories there, the value, the percentage cost, the distribution of it, percentage salary. So an example, 8% of the $3.4 million is used to provide admin a 3% raise. Nearly 50% of the $3.5 million to provide certified raise, and those are certified as your, mostly, mainly your teachers. And then, of course, you see the 13% and 30% respectfully for each category below that. Next slide, please. I gotta keep pushing that when I say that. The next recommendation is another one-time stipend, retention stipend. And this stipend is $1,100 recommended by the IBN team that all staff in this district receive that. Again, that's your certified exempt staff, your classified exempt, classified non-exempt, as well as your administration. Next slide, please. Eligibility requirement is identical to the, the other requirements pertaining to the date, as well as, it's important to identify that this stipend cannot exceed somebody's 1FT. We have a lot of awesome teachers out there that are working beyond a 1FT, and those are typically your six-fifth teachers are picking up a class and, you know, not, not, they're giving up their prep. So that's not recognized here. It's got to be a 1FT not to exceed that. Also, it's important to note, we have staff members that are less than 1FT. So the example we're providing the board here is, if you're appointing 5FT, you wouldn't get the $1,100, you get the $550 because your FT is half of that. So our goal is to pay that out, if approved by the governing board, is when the staff return that August, and that's when all staff return. You know, typically, our, some, a majority of our staff goes on recess after May, and they have a break in employment, as well as in pay as well. They're not paid during that break. And so as soon as they come back, we'd like to be able to put some money in their pocket and then help provide them some relief. Next slide, please. The grid here shows that everybody's receiving an $1,100 stipend. As you can see here, kind of similar to the other graphs, 3% of the 3, almost approximately $3.5 million, 3% is needed to pay the administration that $1,100. A little bit under 50% for our teachers, 9% for classified exempt, and then our hourly wage employees, approximately about 41% of the 3.5 is used to pay that $1,100. Next slide, please. The next recommendation by the IBN team is addressing the base salary for a certified salary system. These are our teachers. And right now, the recommendation is to increase our starting salary accordingly at each grade. And then so, and I'll get right to the graph because I think that's a little easier to read, if we could. The, the starting minimum salary from $42,700 to $48,000 for our starting teachers, that makes us competitive. It makes us retain teachers. It puts us in the market where, you know, where it's hard to bypass this district when it comes to salary, because sometimes salary is important. So, so you can see the different levels, 1 through 5, that those depending on the education grades, et cetera. So it's important to note here that if a new, brand-new teacher that goes from a $42,700 to a $48,000, that's, that's a lot more than 3%. That's approximately, give or take, 12%. And based on the IBN recommendation, and they are recommending that anybody, any employee, teachers on the salary schedule receives a salary increase based on this is more than 3%. They would not receive the 3% of all, all staff receive, which I spoke about previously, because it's 3% or more. And so I think it's important to share with the governing board too. The IBN recognizes that this does create compression, and that's, we need to talk about that. And it creates concerns by employees. And that was spoke about in the IBN process. And they realize that it's creating some concerns from our employees. But based on our budget and the fact that the state of Arizona does not adequately fund school districts, it is almost impossible to address compression at the level that we need to. Just to fix compression within the salary schedule for our teachers, it's a little bit over-
Approximately $5.5 to $6 million.
So it's, it's, it's a lot of money. So it's, it's, it's important to share with the board and those listening, that was discussed, and we do understand. In addition, I'd like to share with the governing board, this salary increase affects almost 450 teachers, current teachers as we speak. Obviously, and anybody that is going to be new will affect as well. But, you know, that's almost, that's over 30% of our certified staff. And so I think it was, I think it's important to share that with the governing board. Next slide, please. This, this next slide, I'm starting a little different on this one. The IBN recommendation coming to the board. This was, this, here's some data that was provided to the, to the IBN team when they were looking at, trying to make a decision here. In short, basically, the Washington Elementary School District, like numerous school districts out there, have to out-resource a lot of their sped programs. And it's, and one of the main reasons, out of many, is it's mandated by minimum state law that our students receive certain services, and it's not negotiable. You have to provide certain services. And so we spend about $3.5 million on psychologists, OT, and speech alone. Now, there's four categories that I'm going to be presenting tonight. That includes our PTs as well. But this district does not engage in out-resourcing any of that. We, we, they're all employees of ours, okay? So this is just some data. If we're able to, under the conditions of an approval by the governing board, if we're able to go forward with what the recommendation is, it's possible, within the next year to three years, a savings of about $600,000. All right, and that's, it's going to make us competitive, it's going to make us attractive, and also retention as well. And so I think it's important to show that data to the governing board before we go into that recommendation, because this is some of the data points that the IBN team did look at. So with that, next slide, please. Again, this is worded out, and get us here shortly to a grid, but our OTs and PTs start at $55,000, well below the state average for our school districts for OTs and PTs. The IBN team is recommending that we increase that to $71,000 as a minimum starting salary. Our speech as well, it's a little bit above the $55,000, right at 58. That is also below the state average when it comes to, like, districts, when it comes to our speech. And we're also asking to increase that. So if we can go to the next slide, please. Lastly, the psychologists, their ranges are a little different because there's education involved with our psychologists. We're, we're starting at $60,000, which is also below the average. We're recommending $75,000, and I think I need to speak to that, to the governing board. Our psychologists go to work more days than our OTs, PTs, and psychs. It's approximately, give or take, around two more weeks than those three other categories. That's why you see the difference there, okay? And so respectfully, you see the increase per degree. If we can go to the next slide, please. So a little cleaner here, this is what it looks like, the starting and ending salary. All right. Again, I, well, Ms. Tucker, can we go back to that? Thank you. I do want to mention again, it's important that, and the same as our certified salary system, any employee that's an OT, PT, speech, or psych, that if this is approved, receives these increases. If it's 3% equal to or more, they would not get the 3% raise that the other all employees would be receiving if approved tonight. So with that, I will end my presentation.
And board members, I'm going to ask for some questions and stuff before a motion is made. Let's make sure that all questions can be answered before we open it up for motions. Board members, questions, concerns, clarifications? Mr. Clayton?
I'd just like to clarify that the IBN team was in 100% consensus on these recommendations at each of the levels.
Madam President, Governing Board members, that is correct.
I have one question, just to make sure that it's clear for the audience and people at home watching. If we approve this, the new salaries for the teachers will be implemented for all of our teachers for next year.
Madam President, Governing Board members, it's important to recognize that any teacher, like, if we, are we on the, thank you. So any teacher that is below the minimum starting at each respected grade or level, the 1 through 5, anybody that's on that grade slash level that is below that minimum, they would increase to, to that minimum.
And that includes also with the last ones, we were just looking at the specialists, that too is the same. So any teacher who is currently in the district that is making less than what the minimum is, and any specialist that's making less than what the minimum is right here will be brought up to that. And then any new teacher that applies with the district will at the very least be started with these new values.
Madam President, Governing Board members, absolutely.
This is my concern. I mean, it's very, it's very complicated for, I'm going to speak for myself, because it is a lot of stuff going on. My own work is going through a process where we're trying to evaluate equitable pay. And what that means is looking at people's job descriptions, looking at their workload, looking at how many hours they actually spend working, and then looking at other people compared to their jobs and seeing if there is balance there, meaning that three years is, is matching other three years, seven years is matching other seven years. And while I think overall, we definitely need higher minimum salaries, this results in generally a $5,300 increase for teachers in, in the first few levels or first few tiers in their first few years. But if you're a teacher that is already making $50,000 and you're in that tier three, you're going to only be getting $1,500. If you're a teacher that's been here for 10 years and you're at 60%, you're going to be getting very little money compared to the 15, the $5,300 that brand-new teachers out the gate are going to get. And so we have to balance- teachers out the gate are gonna get. And so we have to balance recruiting new teachers, but valuing the ones that have stayed in the profession. And I know that you know, with HR, our teachers leave, most teachers, they start their profession, and then they may leave within the years three to five. And so my concern is that while we do want to recruit, we're gonna be putting all this money in, in brand-new teachers that may very well still leave the profession, because it's just not for them, or they realize they are working 60 hours a week, or what have you. And our veteran teachers are, are not being recognized. So I don't know what the answer is, because I don't wanna take away from someone to, but at the same time, I mean, this, it doesn't recognize the, the teachers that have, that have been here. And, and I think it's a little different with the teachers compared to some of the OTs and PTs. And I may, it may be, I don't know enough information, but those are salaries that are grossly under what market would be for people regardless of, of years of service. Those jobs, as your years of service grow, you don't really tend to, in the market, get more and more by years of service in those positions. And please correct me if wrong. I don't wanna make a misunderstanding. But I think that, I've just, I have some concerns with that, because I, it's, it's not recognizing that. And I don't know, I don't know how to do that. I don't know if there's a way to do higher increases for other places and, and substitute maybe some hiring bonuses or stipend. I don't know what the answer is, but I just, it's, it's very hard to say yay for this, but then what about our, our, our teachers and stuff that have been here? So I don't know. I, I just, I'd like to hear any other comments or, or on the, on the matter. Ms. Peterson?
Did you wanna hear from Mr. Mattingly first?
I apologize, Mr. Mattingly. Go ahead.
Madam President, governing board members, thank you for sharing that. One of the things that the IBN committee does have a resource to was exactly what you described. And, and I think it's important to know, to share with the governing board, that the IBN has two teams that separated. And one of them is the Salary Subcommittee. And one of the things, the option and resources we provided was looking at longevity. And we did run different scenarios, singletons, multiple, together. And the, the committee did look at the different ways of trying to recognize longevity in those that have been here for a while. So I, I wanna make sure that the board is aware that that was discussed. And the 21 members, when it was all said and done, decided to go this route, knowing that there will be some concerns, because there is gonna be some compression. And so I wanted to make sure that the governing board was aware that, that was processed at, at the level where it was talked about, looked at, vetted, et cetera.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Is this the part where I give my speech about honoring the work that IBN did, that I prepared for earlier? Just kidding. So I, I, I wanna echo Ms. Whaley's, excuse me, President Gomez-Whaley's concerns about wage compression, because I applaud the fact that we're addressing wage compression for, you know, would you say 30, about 30% of our teachers, 450. But then, the other side of that is that we're creating wage compression. And so I, I really would ask leadership, and as it goes to IBN, you know, in the future, to, to look at that, to look at, do we have carryover dollars? That is, that $5.5 or $6 million, is that a one-time cost of fixed wage compression? I mean, then it'll sneak up again, right? Like, it doesn't stay gone forever, but...
Madam President, governing board members, that amount would be every year.
Yeah. That really ruins my plan, then. Thanks. Thanks, Danny. Wah-wah. But I mean, to, to address that, or to use ESSER dollars to, you know, I know we have ESSER for one more year, where we can do some, some stipends, right?
Yes. So ESSER 3 does end in fiscal year '24.
So we have one more year. Yeah. Where we could use some of that money to do stipends. So I just would ask, you know, and I'm one member, and maybe that's something the board can come together on with their, their board priorities or interests, but that we consider that as, as an important part of, of keeping those, as President Whaley pointed out, those three-to-seven-year teachers who have put in the time, who we've invested in. Mr. Mattingly, what's that number that you shared with me? How much money we lose every time we lose a teacher?
Madam President, governing board members, approximately, give or take, $20,000 to $25,000.
Yeah. That's an investment that we've made that we don't get back when we have to hire a new teacher. So even though they might cost us a little less upfront, we're, that's just walking, that's money that's just walking out that door. That's experience that's working, walking out that door. Those are those relationships we've built. So, so I, I do just wanna ask that that be something that we think about. I also wanted to just take one minute and look at the PT, OT, psychologist, the slide 12, which talks about the outsourcing service. And I just, just to clarify for our community, this is something I didn't understand until my son in Washington L. had to have a, a contract, no, what do they call them?
They're, they're an outsourcer of a vendor, basically an outside vendor that we use through a company.
Had, had to have an, you know, an outside person come in and do some of the services. And actually, it was his teacher. He didn't last very long, because the quality wasn't great. But the cost for that person doesn't mean that we're getting a better person to come in and fill that job. We're getting, you know, whatever the organization sends us to fill that position, and we're paying more for it. They don't have any loyalty to our organization. They don't have any, you know, we don't have the same level of, of support for them. And I hate to use the word control, but you know, that, that sort of like management that we would have, oversight, thank you, that we would have. So A, getting rid of those outsourced people would be wonderful, because it's not the same as having our own employees. But B, to save us that money would be great. And you know, I, I, I do think there's a compression issue, too. And I, I know Ms. Whaley said, you know, a lot of times those people leave because they can find those jobs in the market, which is true. You get paid more to do private OT than you do to be in a school. But there are some really amazing benefits to being in our schools. And we have people who have chosen to be in our schools with our kids. And to, to, you know, I think about Ms. Gwen, who was my son's OT from the time he was seven or eight until he was 14 years old. She helped raise my son. And so, like, just the value that these people add, and, and the value that our kids add to them as well. So I would love to have us address wage compression at all levels, and just think of creative ways to do that. So thank you for IBN's work on this. And yeah, that's all I have.
Any other comments, Ms. Abbott-Biardi?
I just have a quick comment about the compression thing, too. I would like that to maybe be, I guess it might be board interest. I'll save it for another time, for next year. But I do, I think, going to Ms. Peterson's point about the, the base salary increase for the OT, PT, and so forth, I think when we increase that salary, we will become more desirable to come and work in our district. And so maybe we will be able to decrease the amount of outsourcing. So I commend the IBN process for looking at that, because I, I agree, we want, we want people to, to come here and then want to stay for the salary on that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And I wanna clarify, people that stick with an organization deserve to be recognized, too. So I didn't wanna say that, oh, OTs, they don't need money after certain, that's not what I meant to, to imply there. I, it was just starting, looking at that, like, how significantly under-paid even the starting folks are. So that does bring up the same concern as Ms. Peterson said, is what does that look like across the board? I think that's one of the reasons, and, you know, I had brought up previously when we were talking about board, not board interest in this, but when we were talking about the board priorities for our future kind of work, I wanted to look at pay equity, and I wanted to look at our budget and, and where those staff positions are, and how much they're getting paid. Because as Ms. Peterson has, you know, shared with me, we don't have step systems. We don't have a clear pay schedule. There's no kind of clear understanding of where folks are gonna be. And so that's not a good way to do it. And I recognize, Mr. Mattingly, you've only been here for, what, two years, maybe? So you didn't create that system. But I think that we definitely have not taken the time to investigate the system of the way we, we pay and, and do those kinds of things. And I think that what I've heard from the board in the discussion is that we do wanna look at that. We do wanna create some accountability for ourselves. We do wanna have some transparency around where folks can land, where their growth opportunities are in terms of their salary, but also just growth opportunities in, in general, and what we're gonna do for them when they achieve those growth opportunities, right? Like, they're growing, they're developing, they're becoming better teachers, but then what happens with that? So I don't know how that solves tonight's issue. And because, you know, it's, it's both. We need to do both. But I, I definitely know, from my perspective, this is not a conversation that was over. I appreciate the suggestion of maybe looking at how we can begin to write this and address this issue, perhaps with next year's ESSER dollars, perhaps with other additions and changes that we can do. But thank you for bringing, bringing at least some, some suggestions. And then, and thank you for bringing it up, that the board is aware, and that the district is aware, that this, there's issues on, on both ends of this. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and see if anybody has, from the administration, has any last-minute comments.
Yeah. Madam President, governing board members, I wanna just make sure, the IBN process is still active, and we still have anomalies. There are staff interests that still need to come to the governing board. This is not the last of them. There's some more coming. So I just wanted, just to remind the governing board, there'll be some more anomalies coming in the near future.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So does that mean that the concerns that were just expressed tonight could potentially come up soon to correct or rectify?
That's not what I, I'm sorry, Ms. Melzwell, and I'll let Mr. Mattingly go a little bit further, but that, that is not the understanding, because there's other anomalies. Those things do need to be addressed as well, that IBN's working through. But I don't know if the answer is, we, I mean, I don't think the answer is that you can't. I'll go ahead and let you, you go forward with that, but it seems like a longer-term issue.
Madam President, governing board members, yeah, based on the, the status and where we're at with the IBN process, we're at the end of the process. This is, it's, it would be extremely difficult to address that with where we're at with everything. We're, we're very close to being done.
Especially when we're trying to give some kind of clarity for those contracts that are coming due.
And it's clear, we were looking for other options. I heard that through other sources. I wanna be clear, but yes, Steve described it well. We are in the current process, using the current board interest. Appreciate you saying, Ms. Whaley, which you did, so, to help clarify. Thanks.
Okay. Does anyone wish to make a, a motion?
I'll motion to approve the salary increase, run one-time retention stipend, base salary increase to certified salary system, and base salary increase to student service professionals' salary system as presented.
Thank you for that very clear motion. That's what they're there for. I, I'm not being facetious. I actually appreciate the clarity on that.
A second.
And so we have a first from Mr. Clayton, and we have a second from Ms. Abbott-Biardi. And I will say, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And that motion passes. All right. We are at the end with a request for future reports and/or agenda items, board members. All right. Hearing none. Remember that you can always email the board president or board secretary with any requests. And so with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Melzwell. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned at 10:42 PM.